Jeff Turner might be running a little bit late. I think he was in the board.
He's in there.
Oh, he just pulled in. Okay, great. Thanks.
Dorothea, do you have a hard copy of the agenda there by any chance?
No.
Is there anything up front?
There is up front.
I'll go grab it. Okay. Thank you.
I think your packet.
Hard copy of the agenda? No? That's probably right. I know, right? I'll do practice.
Yeah, I think your printout is in the other room.
That's okay.
I'm trying to put it at the table.
Thank you though.
No, thanks, Dorothea.
Kathy, you want yours back?
No.
All right. Sure.
That's impressive.
Lots of practice, right Kathy?
I wrote it and I remember. We're ready to go? Oh, we're ready. Okay. Captions, everything? Yep. Okay. I make a motion, we open the meeting. Is there a second?
My second.
Ropel, trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lister.
Aye.
Trustee Lister.
Aye.
Motion taken. Okay. Is there any board member who has a conflict of interest or anything to disclose regarding an agenda item this evening?
I do not.
I do not.
I do not.
Conflict on number eight and we're not participating.
Okay. And just so you know, I did send to Dorothea and everybody the request that I'd like to have it removed from the agenda. I'm not ready to speak again, please.
I asked for it to remain on the agenda, so my name's going to go on that instead.
Thank you.
And I actually just want to disclose that we have a public hearing tonight on 9th South Main Street, and I did speak very briefly on the phone with one of the applicants just about their menu and that they experienced it, just to disclose that. Okay, so that being said, if the clerk could give us the guidelines on the open meeting compliance. Sure. I gotta think what they are. If you're participating via Zoom, please raise your hand if you wish to speak. If you wish for me to ask a question on the board, please put it in the Q and A. I don't respond to chat. Please provide name and address if allowed by law. Same thing for in the group. And then I just ask everybody to participate in a friendly and cooperative manner. And we get done early because I got a plane. She's going on vacation tomorrow.
Where are you going, Dorothea?
Florida. She's gonna be on the beach. Okay. With that being said, happy birthday to trustee Coe.
Thank you.
And we'd like the birthday girl to lead us in the pledge of allegiance. Please, please stand.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Okay. Do you have a public comment section? Is there anyone wishing to speak? Yes.
Yes. John LeFay, 62 St. Mary's Street. And I just thought that a trustee Coe was going to come sit here on her birthday.
Oh, don't set off the fire alarm.
Well, thank you.
Happy birthday. You guys can sing at your own house.
Oh, I can share that. Thank you so much, John. Do I have a big wish?
I think you do.
Thanks, John.
Thank you.
For 10.
Okay. Any other public comment? Anybody online, Dorothea? Do you have somebody? A bit for public comment. Just a...
No comment at this time.
Okay. First up, village tree legislation.
I do have a good comment.
Can we, we'll have the, we'll have the board start in with it and then we'll take comment. Okay. Yep. Just to kind of introduce the item. Okay. Thanks, Sam.
All right. You want to start?
Give me.
All right. Well, last time we spoke on it, I don't know if we made any final decisions as much as we wanted to bring it back. So let me just let the public know where we stand. In the packet, there are two sections. There's a section on a tree law, and then there's a section on an adoptive law specific to heritage trees. The heritage tree law was essentially that upon request, the property owner could designate a tree as a heritage tree, and then by being a heritage tree, if we should accept it, then the tree would be protected from that point forward. And as such, sorry, I don't see it right where it was, but there would be opportunities for the, here it is, "The village of Pittsburgh will assist the property owner at the village expense with regards to the care and maintenance of such heritage tree." So if somebody and we were to accept designated tree, we would then from that point forward offer guidance at our expense with regards to that tree. I don't know if today we've had anybody come forward with a tree they'd like to include in that, but that is outstanding. And there's some wonderful trees. If any trustee or member of the public might like to have somebody come forward in regards to that program, I think it's a great program as a first step. It was maybe two meetings ago, we had a few other trees, large trees, come down in the village, and we suggested that perhaps we bring this back to the board, the original tree legislation, and talk about the reservations why at that time some of us had with regards to adopt them. And where we are today, I think, is clarifying, what could we as a board potentially consider moving forward and what would it look like? And I think at that point, we'd probably want to send it to the planning board for review because it does affect the LWRP area, and then we'd come back. I think that would be the next step, but I'm not so sure.
Jeff, do you want to comment on that or?
I think so.
You know, I mean, I think, yeah. Instead of HPV? Would there be a reason why? Is it because of both?
Planning board is the board of the two that handles landscaping, I think, and they're also the one that does the LWRP. So I think that's why it would go to them.
But you know, you raised an interesting point about the HPV, because if we're looking at a heritage tree, some trees, you know, they tell, they're about our history. And I was thinking, you know, the oaks that were planted on Bowden after the Civil War. Yes, you know, as some commemorative trees, things like that, that there's, you know... What their significance? Yeah. Why they're significant? Yeah. Okay.
I think the planning board is the right board.
I mean, I understand the planning board too. I understand the planning board too.
My quick question, maybe Jeff, this to you, and looking at what was in the packet, there were some gaps in understanding. For example, in, it says upon written request and consent by property owner, the, and then it has HPV planning board, board trustees may designate the tree as a heritage tree. So this is a question to Dorothea and to Jeff because my memory is bad here. Have we officially adopted this legislation? We have not. Okay, so this is before us as...
We have tree legislation insofar as it relates to our trees.
Correct. So we currently have tree legislation on our trees. We, I think, had approved, Jeff, to come back to us with legislation to the heritage tree, and that's what we see here now. So this needs final approval. Before doing so, we also have the question just of trees in general. And trees in general, do we protect them and to what extent? And those protected trees, just by default, they do not receive village assistance with regards to an arborist. Instead, it would be all trees of a certain diameter or a certain, there's not a, like acceptance process, it's just any tree. And initially, the legislation was at six inches of width at four feet high.
Caliper.
Caliper. So...
And that was about protecting the entire canopy?
Yep.
And looking at it from a point of sustainability and best practices.
So we had some community feedback that was concerned about it. We had talked about what we could get done at the time, and at the time, we voted this in for the heritage tree legislation. I think in looking back and bringing it forward again, again with community input, the question is, is what could we adopt to protect some of the trees? And I'll just kind of say what I am to this. I think six inches is probably too small. I'd like to see a bigger, maybe 10 to 12. I think the planning board is the right board to do it. And I think in this particular legislation, as it was crafted, anybody who wanted to take a tree down needed the recommendation of a certified arborist or the tree service that would be performing the removal. And I think in that regard, I wouldn't mind if the building inspector or the planning board indifferent to an arborist could make a determination if the tree should come down, but the planning board could request a certified arborist's opinion. So meaning, the part of the application right now, so the application for approval on page two of what's in the packet, it goes through in section 192 Ford 2. It goes through A through I of what needs to be in the application. And the one that I think hangs me up the most is the recommendation of a certified arborist or the tree service that will be performing the removal, essentially saying, you've got to go spend some money, put it on this application. And what I'm suggesting is, what if we just allow the application to move forward, the planning board can then make a determination?
Or the tree board or?
Or the tree board. And personally, I think the planning board should be the tree board, not a separate board. But whoever that board may be, that board then could say, you know, this is a healthy tree. It is the types of trees that native trees that we want. There doesn't seem to be a reason why we should take it down. And perhaps the property owner might say, well, these limbs are encroaching on ABC, and this is the risk that we see. At that point, the planning board could say, well, go get a certified arborist's opinion. Right? But prior to that, if it's non-native, if it, well, they can already take that down. But I think the planning board could have enough information on all of those other A through I minus the recommendation of the arborist to bring it before the board, to allow the board to make a determination. The, a couple of the quick caveats, right? So if it's non-native, if it's a danger, if it is, there are a lot of ways...
Those are addressed in the legislation already.
That's right.
Yes, all of those are addressed. It's really about preserving, you know, the greater canopy and native trees in the canopy. And if you have a non-native, you can cut it down. Yeah, Lilly.
I'm assuming that there is a fee involved to making an application to the planning board?
I did not remember if there was an application fee, though I believe the building inspector has the...
We set the fees. We set the fees.
Right?
Yep.
So my question is that an applicant would pay to have their, their application heard by the planning board, then the planning board might say, you need an arborist, and now you've got another investment regarding wanting to take a tree down that's in your, on your yard, in your yard on your property?
That's right.
And then if you have a disagreement with the decision of the planning board, then you perhaps have even more expense incurred getting extra sent. I'm just, I'm trying to look at it from a practical standpoint. If I'm a resident who is interested in taking down a tree because I feel it's too close to my home, and I'm concerned that it's going to fall and damage my home, that this process that I have to go through?
Yep.
Might end up costing me a good amount of money, and then I might not be able to take the tree down. I'm just trying to look at it.
Yeah, I think the code addresses that because when you, when you set the sentence with the tree's too close and it's going to fall on the house, or, you know, there's a danger, that's addressed in the code. If there is, if there is a danger created, whether it is a native, a non-native, ever, if there's, if there's a threat to safety, it is addressed in this code.
Yeah. And to comment on that, so the fee for the application doesn't have to be considerable. Again, we set the fees. And in its F, it says, "The condition of the tree with respect to disease, hazard, proximity to existing or proposed structures, interference, utility, etc. Said condition to be certified or attested," again, the certified arborist stuff, I think I'd want to have to be after that review. But I think the language in this is pretty straightforward, that if you're just looking to cut down a heritage tree of 10 to 12 inches in diameter on your property, that isn't a danger to structure, isn't disease, is, I think it's pretty clear in what we're trying to do, that I would hope that the planning board might just say, you know, we don't see a reason why this tree should come down. You don't need to go get an arborist to tell you because their opinion's not going to affect our decision.
Okay. I guess in thinking it through as far as what we're crafting here, I would be very interested, once it comes to public hearing, to hear what the public says about it and respect that. So as far as crafting what we're doing here this evening, then let's get something that's ready to take to a public hearing.
Now, this is a question to Jeff. Can we get the opinion of the planning board before or after the public opinion? And how do we do that?
You just ask them.
Right. So we do it, we do it in advance of sending it, right?
Yeah.
Okay. So then, I guess what I would say is maybe we need a motion to do it. But let's hear about caliber first. Is there a certain caliber that at least three or four of us could agree on in terms of size?
Not an arborist, but four inches seems a little small.
I think it's six.
It was six. Six inches at four feet high seems a little small.
Yeah. It could, 12 inch tree, right?
Yeah, I think.
Maybe we could do 10, but, I mean, I'd probably agree on 10.
You can start with less than eight.
I'll go to eight.
Okay, you have eight?
That's about it. Because once you start establishing a tree and you take it, I mean, I was thinking, oh, it's a small tree. It takes, it takes a lot of time to grow a tree.
Yeah.
To get it to that point, you know, I mean, I, I think we're sort of focusing on, focusing on the donut hole and not the donut. It's about the tree that's growing that's established and is healthy and is part of our canopy. If you don't want it to be a six inch caliber, okay, eight inch. But, you know, by the time you hit 12 inches, you want to know how long it took for a tree to get to that point?
Mm-hmm.
It's a big deal.
Yeah.
So I just want the board to be aware of that. And I know there's some people here that also want to speak, speak to that as well, probably have more information. Yeah, Justin?
I agree that the six inches to me is too, is too small, and I would go with something like 10 or 12 instead. But I think it's also worth keeping in mind that the legislation, once it goes to public hearing, as far as I can understand it, can be made less restrictive. So we could always increase it after the public hearing before adoption.
Yes.
That's right.
Yeah, that's always true.
Okay, so...
But I would go with something, you know, six is probably...
No, no, other way.
The other way.
The other way. You mean less restrictive, less restrictive.
Okay, so let's, let's do this. Let's do this. To the mayor's point, you know, there are some trees that are native, that an eight inch tree, like you said, is a very tall, successful tree that perhaps should stand the test of time. But we're also protecting the current canopy. So to the degree that the planning board may or may not make these decisions, or the tree board may or may not make the decisions to allow it to come down, I think, I'm okay starting at eight. We'll see where we go with public hearing. I think we craft a legislation to, we instruct Jeff to craft a legislation where the elements that include a certified arborist or additional cost to the property owner would be only upon request by the tree board or the planning board rather than as part of the application. And I think we have the planning board be our tree board and see where this goes from there.
Well, if we establish an environmental board, you know, for, as part of being a climate smart and clean energy community, I would think that it would be a natural to have that board be, incorporate the tree board as part of that.
Can I, can I?
Because the planning and zoning board is a lot of stuff, you know, and this is like one more thing, you know, they can always defer to the, you know, make a referral to the planning board, but I don't know. I just think that's sort of as a more, as a practical matter, that might be the way to go. Yeah.
I'd like to make a comment. So I was looking through some of our comprehensive plan information. Also, the Arbor Day Foundation, we are an Arbor Day, or we are a tree city. So looking at the foundation statement, it talks about the village of Pittsburgh achieved tree city USA recognition by meeting the program's four requirements: maintaining a tree board or department, having a tree care ordinance, dedicating an annual community forestry budget of at least $2 per capita, and hosting an Arbor Day observation and proclamation.
Which we do.
Right, we did that. So looking further, the comprehensive plan, I'm looking at, gosh, page 35, if I tell you, if you don't know this, but I'm looking under supporting the health, safety, and well-being of residents. And in that, there's no mention, and actually there's no mention at all about tree benefits to the community. And I would like to maybe discuss recommending putting together a village forest master plan. And we have a comprehensive master plan. We don't have a forest master plan. And I think that that might be something in addition, you know, regulation obviously doesn't work on tonight, but to support regulation and maybe having it kind of have an advisory committee with residents, because residents are the ones that actually started this and have brought it back to the table. So I love resident involvement, but to put together some kind of master plan for our forestry here in the village.
Zach, did you speak to the tree management in the village and just, you know, the inventories and?
We do have a street tree inventory. It's roughly like 11, 12 hundred trees, and it covers everything.
Sorry, how many trees?
1100, 1200.
1200, yeah, okay.
And which, you know, we use that as our master plan. We have an interactive map that we can go through and keep track of growth and anything that we take down and open pots, and we planted, the age of the tree, and we have them.
And we're updating the inventory also to recognize, you know, the difference between non-invasive species that are non-native and invasives as well.
Right, so we have a current criteria. We've got current documentation of what's existing now. Do we have a plan for future? Do we have a comprehensive plan for the future of our trees?
Well, we certainly could. I agree with you. We should incorporate it back into, you know, that's an update.
Yeah.
The tree inventory is something very specific.
Sure, sure.
And how we manage the entire, you know, thousand trees or whatever in the village. Just to finish my thought, so I think you raised a good point about maybe updating that portion of the comp plan.
Yeah, there is.
The comprehensive plan is something that's sort of, you know, aspirational, and that really should be included.
Right, because there's not any mention at all of tree health. So I think that we really should put it in there. I mean, I think that we deserve to have it in our campaign.
Yeah, so that's duly noted. Absolutely. Yeah, Justin?
I think that a lot of what we're discussing here, and maybe the number of meetings at which we've discussed this, really indicates that we could use some more guidance and some more thoughtful planning behind this type of legislation. And that's not to say that I don't think that we could proceed with some kinds of legislation in that's of it. But looking around, I noticed that the city of Rochester has an urban forest master plan. Lots of other communities have this kind of thing. And I think that having a village forest master plan, as trustee Coe suggested, is a fantastic idea.
I think we're all in agreement. I'm hoping we all are. That'd be a wonderful thing. And we already have the underpinnings of it. Abby, you wanted to... Yeah, I know you wanted to speak.
Yeah.
Name and address.
Abby McCray, 25 Washington Avenue. I'm also here representing Josie Ender at 12 Maple Street. And we are concerned citizens in support of this ordinance. We'd love to see it passed.
I'm sorry. There was somebody coughed. I didn't hear what you ended up saying.
We are just concerned citizens, and we are in support of this ordinance. We'd love to see it passed.
Oh, okay, thank you. Thanks to Josie too. Yes.
And I would also support the six inch because just, we should bring in some models.
I was thinking of that.
To show what six inches actually looks like on a tree.
And what it takes, especially...
And how tall a tree with that kind of circumference, is that the term?
Circumference or caliber.
What that actually looks like.
Yeah, that would be helpful. Visual aid is always helpful. I agree with you. Yeah, yeah.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. Again, I have to agree with Justin. I think, I think this topic deserves a lot of study. As mayor, I was the person who initiated the restoration of the street tree canopy throughout the village. And I think one of the things that's in the act of transportation plan, but if there is a master plan, a forestry master plan, it should be standards for street trees because obviously they explain an important role in traffic coming and making our busy streets livable. I think there's actually a number of different categories. If you have a new tree ordinance, then you probably should address. And one would obviously be six inch trees on my property, as you've discussed. Street trees would be another category. Village parks would be the third category. And I think the fourth category would be the village arboretum, which has a set of unique issues in that. And obviously, as the president and the friends of the arboretum, we've been spending the last three years researching some of these issues. So we would expect to be included in any discussion that you have regarding the arboretum. And we're happy to lend my personal expertise and the expertise of professionals in our group as you develop a master plan in the village, which is not the forest. Thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for your comments. Anybody else? Anybody online?
Joe, I have one additional comment. Abby McCray, 25 Washington Avenue. I'm a little bit concerned about leaving the designation of heritage tree up to the residents because they may be unaware of their tree. They may, I don't know, just, it seems like it might be more useful in the overall analysis of the village to help people identify what is on their property, to say, you know, just, hey, we're developing this forestry plan for our village, and you, you're in possession of many heritage trees. Just let them know.
Yeah, thank you for that. You raise a really good point because there is an educational component about that. And I've, I've lived in other communities where letters would be sent to homeowners saying, we have identified a heritage tree on your property. And then there's something, you know, you educate the homeowner about it. So it's far more proactive on the part of the municipality to reach out to the property owners about their trees.
And also to remove all companies, you know, so they know that they need to follow their protocols.
That's, that's a really good point. Yes. Sure, of course.
So David Woltz, 19 East Jefferson Road. I want to kind of echo exactly what you were saying. Think it's, it's a little rough right now as a resident, as someone who's not a tree expert. And I think a lot of residents would probably feel the exact same way in the sense of, I have no idea what's a native tree, what's non-native, what's invasive on my property. But I think a lot of, I would assume, a lot of people, you know, state of law, assuming, would be concerned about this law purely from the standpoint of, I'm not going to be able to cut down a tree. If there's any issue, I won't be able to cut down a tree. But if there was an educational component where residents are able to see, oh, wow, I'm learning it all with actual species or up in property, I think it would be beneficial for residents, families, children. It would be an exercise for everybody. The other aspect, I do similarly believe that the six inch that's in here right now, I like it, but to be honest with you, again, I'm not a tree expert. So it's a bit of putting, you know, my finger in the air for the win. But at the same time, I'm a little concerned as well with the four. It seems like, I would assume most of you are not tree experts as well, that there's a bit of, oh, let's do eight inches, let's do 10. It just, I feel like that's not how it should be decided. There should be expertise put into that diameter. Again, an arborist with calibers coming out is telling us, hey, here's the root structure of some of this species at this diameter. Someone with the expertise, I would love for that to be in there as someone who's part of the PCVA before it gets to me. And I'm having to opine on it to know that there is an expert behind that decision, before I then do opine on it as well.
Thank you. Yeah. And I know, well, we can, it's actually sort of feeds one of the other items about setting up the climate smart environmental board about some of the research that's done and the nature of their mission. So all good points.
If I may.
Yeah.
So just to comment on David's point, one of the reasons to have the planning board have the capacity to ask for an arborist? board have the capacity to ask for an arborist's opinion is exactly that, to get that opinion when it's necessary.
She's just getting off.
So, let me just repeat that, right? The expertise that would go to the planning board if they were to be defined as the tree board, would come from the request to the property owner if they felt it necessary. We should not, in this legislation, make it an incredibly cumbersome work, understand what is a tree and what is not a tree. If we had experts tell us, hey, how long did it take this type of tree at this juncture to arrive at this point, you'd have a whole bunch of different varieties of a whole bunch of different diameters, and it would be different for everything, and so by picking six inches, maybe there are a few native trees that you're protecting at a younger age than others that might take a lot longer to get there. So, I guess where I'm at with this is, you want the legislation to be simple enough to be easily understood, you want it to capture the vast majority of the canopy, there may be some of the canopy that is missed. I think if we get too small, right, it becomes too much of a burden.
But what you're saying is too small, I just want to interject here, what you're, and I think this is the point you were raising, Abby, as well, what you're thinking is too small, oh, it's only six inches, with a tree expert, they would be able to say why maybe the six inch caliber is something that we should be looking at, and I do know that it ended up in this code, because that is found in many, many other codes.
Okay.
You know, in other words, I think at this point, there's some speculation, kind of, as opposed to what, you know, David and Abby were saying, you know, let's get the educational piece involved as part of this, yeah. Zach?
A six inch caliber tree could be, depending on the species of the tree, could it be a 15, 25-year-old tree?
Correct.
Yeah, so I mean, that's pretty robust.
And what I would suggest is, the term heritage, right, which is in the comprehensive plan, to create a heritage tree ordinance, I forget exactly where it was, I think page 52, in the environmental section or the sustainability section, the only thing in the comprehensive plan specific is to tree protection, is the heritage tree protection. Personally, as much as I do love 15, 20, 25-year-old trees, when I think heritage, I think a little bit older than that. And so, if we then move away from what the comprehensive plan says and go beyond what it's asking for, which is a tree ordinance, beyond what is currently in the comprehensive plan, I want to be careful to, I want to protect the vast majority of the canopy, but I also want to recognize that, hey, maybe it's eight inches that we start, maybe it's not six, maybe that picks up another 10 years or something, right? I guess what I would say is, if we can craft this legislation, if there's a majority of us here are in agreement, to craft it in a way where the request to the arborist is at the planning board's request, I would like it to go to the planning board, I don't want to have to wait around for a tree board to be created or a sustainability board to be created. Right now, the planning board does deal with landscaping on all site plans that is part of their purview, and I think that they're a perfect board to understand the implications of taking down trees on sites, they're the ones that determine if they come down, if somebody builds an extension on their home, they're the ones that determine pretty much everything we have in our community currently about trees and landscaping. They can request expertise, you know, so to David's point, being on the planning board, if they're uncomfortable with the information that's in front of them to make a decision if a tree can come down, they can request of that homeowner or applicant to go get additional information.
I have a quick question, maybe I misheard you, are you saying that six inch trees are heritage trees?
No.
That's not, I'm not seeing that, okay, because maybe I misheard you.
No, what I'm saying is, the comprehensive plan today, the way, and I'll just pull it up, I just had it up, bring it up again.
I know, I know.
You know what I'm talking about.
Yes, I do.
So, it's on page 52 under sustainability, it's the very last, and it says, create a heritage tree program. If somebody asks, hey, what's a heritage tree, it's probably not 15, 20, 25 years old, it's probably a little older than that. So, again, my point is, if we're going beyond the comprehensive plan, I don't want it to be too aggressive in its initial application, I'd like to start creating, craft the legislation at eight inches, to Justin's comment, we could start at six and then move to eight, or we could start at eight and move to 10, and anybody on this board can go get expertise and understand it, maybe there's some native varieties that we list as an exception, but it just gets harder to implement.
So, we've spent, oh, here we go, the lights. You know what, if you just dim it down just slightly, yeah, just a tad, sometimes it stops it there, well, or not.
There we go.
There, thank you. So, okay, so, we've had some discussion here, what are the action items going forward? What would the board like to do?
If you want me to make a motion?
Hey, I think that's why we're here.
Okay, I'll make a motion that Jeff draft the street tree ordinance in such a way that the planning board is the tree board and would receive the applications, that the initial caliber, given Justin's comment, let's just start at six and see what public opinion says, but my, the likelihood is we move it higher, and that any reference to needing a recommended arborist's opinion or tree service opinion would be at the discretion of the planning board or the planning board's request. Also, Jeff, you had two number threes, I like the first one, not the second one.
What section are you, wait a minute?
This is 192-4, section three, you had an or, so it could be all the things embedded in section three, or everything that was identified on the application A to I. I like using three, and then somewhere in three, adding an additional item where they could request a certified arborist or tree service opinion, to the extent that the planning board might request it.
Which one, first one or the second?
In terms of your three?
Yeah.
Here, like this, where the...
So, the first one?
Yeah, the first one, so this stuff goes down into there somehow. And then we prepare a document for public hearing. Let me see. That's my motion.
Do I second your discussion?
Yeah, I'll second that discussion.
Because I knew where you were going, okay.
So, that's the second.
So, we have a second, and back to the board for discussion. Anybody?
Yeah, so I don't, the proposal that you made, Dave, about the, where there are two sections, two possibilities for the decision, I don't understand the blue after the or, and I think that's the one that you were preferring, so.
Delete it, no, delete the...
Delete that, and then go with the part above, where it's the decision based upon A through F.
Correct, and somewhere insert there, the ability to request an arborist or a tree service opinion, to the extent requested, licensed professional, blah, blah, blah. So, if you look on the section before, section two before it, F and G both reference certified arborist or licensed professional, and I just want that to be at the discretion of the planning board. And so, too, this speaks a little bit to David's point, that while he may not be a professional, if, based on the circumstance and the application, they feel they need it, well, they can put that back on that.
Okay, so, a lot, thank you for clarifying that, that is helpful, and that seems much, that seems like a better solution to me, too. I just wanted to discuss one point here, after I had moved into our house, we cut down a really ugly kind of overgrown Douglas fir that was in the corner of our property, and it was just kind of overgrown from the space, you know, missing some branches, and, you know, it just was kind of overbearing in a crowded area. As I was looking through the code in this situation, it seems that even, it was probably just beyond six inches DBH, maybe not a whole lot, but probably just beyond that, and in looking at the code at this situation, I don't believe that even with an application of the board, they would be able to allow me to remove that at all. And that was in applying the existing criteria here, so, and if they had, with the criteria in my favor, which I don't think they could have, I think I would have been forced to buy another six, another tree of similar DBH, I don't know how much that would cost to replace like a full grown Douglas fir. And so, the thing that I did wouldn't be allowed by the code that we're considering here, I guess, and that would be my first concern. One thing that might help a little bit is if we added to the criteria, so one concrete consideration, I'm still not sure that I was supported with this, but I, one concrete consideration could be adding to the criteria here, that the decision is also, also includes best practices in urban forest management. And I think that in that case, what might be allowed is that, you know, you cut down this low-quality Douglas fir, and I'm not going to plant another eight DBH Douglas fir, but I'm going to plant a few native hardwoods, and then, you know, maybe the board is allowed to consider that kind of an application on my property, but I'd like to hear other thoughts on that as well.
That's a good point.
I think that's a good point, Justin.
I think that's great. What was the phrase, Justin?
Best practices.
Best practices in urban forest management, or something like that.
Something like that.
So, that would be...
I mean, it gives some flexibility, I think, within the parameters that are laid out, because there are sometimes circumstances, you know.
So, this would be H or added to three, another one, right?
Yeah.
And then I think in four, this speaks to the caliber question, right? So, the way that it's written now, the board shall have the authority to deny or grant any application to remove or alter a tree, and to condition such grant upon the immediate replacement of such tree by one or more native non-invasive trees in total caliber. So, this speaks to the best practice of urban management, if it's appropriate to have a tree there, but it's only reasonable to start it at three inches or something, or two, or whatever.
It addresses that.
I think it addresses that.
It does.
Yes.
It's consistent, I think, with a lot of other types of...
Yeah.
I think that would be very helpful.
Yeah, yeah, it gives more leeway.
Okay, and then the next question, I guess, would be, is if they're denied, is there an avenue for appeal? It would go to the historic preservation board at that point, or is there no avenue for appeal to the ZBA?
To the ZBA, if you don't want to do it. You don't want to do that in this case.
Right, it's the same. So, do we want to maybe have, can we have it go to the, to us?
We can start there.
Right? Is there more progress, something we've made on this?
Well, we're at least putting together legislation.
Yeah, I think we could start there, and if that would work out, we can change it, right? But at least we have some kind of a field process for everyone, and I think that would be most appropriate, more so than HPP, I think.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
It's already gone to one more, yeah.
It's not HPP, it's Turkey.
If we were to decline the board, then you have to give, if you hadn't given it to the planning board initially, then saying nothing about an appeal would default to the ZBA.
But it's starting with them, so.
Yeah, so it goes.
Not happening.
I'm okay coming out of this.
I'm okay, I'm okay.
Yeah.
The other option is to give the initial decision to the code enforcement officer.
That's true.
Give the initial decision to the code enforcement officer, then the initial decision he makes.
The appeal that would go.
I think in this instance, I'd rather have it go to the planning board. The code enforcement officer, the village inspector, the code enforcement officer is going to have a considerable amount of work here already, just to make sure that it's not native, it's damaged or not damaged, it's, right, there are things that they're going to be doing, or Steve's going to be doing already, that when it comes to a tree that we want to keep.
He just calls on trees all the time, though.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, I don't see that as like drastically expanding, you know, part of what he does, and also, I know, Zach, he confers with you as well, and now we have an arborist also as part of the crew, so.
Again, I think...
I don't know that it's that big a leap.
I'd rather have it go to the planning board, and then have the appeal come to us.
Either way, I'm just glad we're crafting legislation.
I agree.
And if it's tedious or overwhelming to the planning board, to us, we can make different decisions and go from there.
Sure.
Yeah, we could try this one.
Yep, yep. Yes.
Robert Corby, Southern Washington Avenue. One other condition that's very common is, often when people plant trees, they don't accommodate the growth of those trees, so there are many situations where two, you know, harmful deciduous trees, a hardwood deciduous tree and a coniferous tree are planted two rows together, and the growing of one of those trees is compromised, so that should be somewhere, we should have something with the language that allows this.
And I think that was addressed by trustee Leipchuk's comment, about best practices for urban forestry management, in terms of what would be best practices, so, thank you, thanks for reinforcing that. Yeah, okay.
I think that's good.
All right.
And then this would essentially replace the heritage tree, or do we do the heritage tree as well, and I think if we do the heritage tree one, the reason why I like keeping it, is it actually gives to the property owner something uniquely separate that we then offer a service for, if the tree legislation doesn't afford, or if it gets changed in the future, I think the heritage tree is a little more teeth and offers a little bit to.
Yeah, I want to talk about what it means as soon as a resident identifies, you know, a 150-year-old tree, as, you know, they want it to be a heritage tree, and we say, thank you, and now we take care of your tree. I just, you know, I think we really need to take a look at that language and how it's crafted in the ordinance.
Heritage trees are automatically protected by this ordinance.
Yes.
Okay, I wish I could.
The difference is line five in the ordinance, in exchange for the request by a property owner, as referenced in A herein, if the designation of such a tree is a heritage tree, the village of Pittsburgh will assist the property owner at the village's expense with regards to repair and maintenance of such tree. So, to your point, it can get very expensive.
I mean, where does that go, like, how does, what does that look like?
Yeah.
And I mean, I'm excited to, I want to protect our heritage trees, I also agree with what Abby said, you know, that I think we should be proactive and really reach out to homeowners that we know they have large trees, older trees, really significant trees that contribute to this canopy, and be proactive, you know, rather than sort of placing it on the homeowner, you know, there's the educational component that I think is missing, but the idea, once an heirloom tree is identified, it's kind of a big deal for us to, you know, I think just with the way the language is, and I don't know that I have the answer, because we want to protect them, but how do we do that, and we want to make sure that we can support a homeowner who probably bought the house, because also it had beautiful trees, and they wanted it, you know, I mean, it's not just on us, it's mutual, and welcome up, any thoughts?
Yeah, so there's two ways that we could go about with this legislation, one is, of course, we just simply don't accept any trees, so maybe it's two or three key magnificent trees that we're willing to assume the cost of, because sometimes those really big trees are very expensive to maintain, and that homeowner might just as well let that tree fall into some disrepair, if it's two owners of cost, but we don't want them to cut it down. I suppose that's one way to go about it, we just accept far fewer than, like, one or two or something, right? There's not many.
Not really that many, actually.
Right, the other is to have this acceptance be only for a certain period of time, so you reapply every three years or five years, and then you just limit the risk that you made a bad decision.
You know, I want to give an example, and Lily, you recall this, too, you know, the oak on Fountain, that gorgeous oak that was planted after the Civil War is compromised, it's at the end of Fountain as you head to south, and it's beautiful, and we love that tree, and it's iconic in our village, that is a heritage tree, but it's dying, and so, we as a board, you know, thought, oh, do we cut it down? And so, we as a board, you know, thought, oh, do we cut it down? Well, we made the decision to trim it back and to really, every single year, have a professional arborist keep evaluating that tree, because eventually it is going to go, but, you know, what, the first year when we trimmed it back was what, a couple of thou- thousand, couple of thousand? So, you know, you, it adds up if you have many trees like that that need to be managed. I'm just using that only as an example. Oh, here we go with the lights, yeah.
Can I interject?
Yeah.
It's only because I have a question. That tree, I believe we have assumed some responsibility because it's on village right away. How do we use taxpayer dollars on private property to maintain? That's my concern, just speeding from the tree.
But the other thing, too, a heritage tree in and of itself contributes to the greater good of the community and the canopy, you know. And in other words, I was thinking of the tree that was cut down, or was it on Elm Brook? That really created quite a large hole in the canopy and contributed to the canopy. So, you know, I, I see exactly where you're going, and I think it's worth obviously discussing, but, you know, the canopy and habitats don't know boundaries. Trees grow, ritters nest, you know.
I shook it in memory when you said that. A very large, known to be a heritage, new to be a heritage tree on Fountain Avenue, was taken down by a homeowner because the shade was so pervasive, they were not able to grow anything in their backyard, which was troubling to them because that's their What about in a situation like that? They have the right to take down the tree, although we would prefer that they not.
I can tell you what I did. I put in native shade gardens, and I knew that when I bought the property, the tree on it, well, they actually had two trees. Everybody's different, I, you know.
I know, that's exactly right. Everybody's different.
Everybody's special.
So I'm hoping that we get input from residents, because I think they will be...
We'll hear it publicly, for sure.
I think this is going to be...
So we have a motion and a second.
The justice on the...
And so amended?
Yeah, so amended.
So amended?
Right.
Any, you're good? Okay. All right. Is there a vote?
Trustee Liken.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
I...
Motion to adjourn.
Okay, we're moving along, we're crafting legislation.
Hang on just a second. So I'm, sorry, this is the heritage tree ordinance. It needs a separate motion.
Right.
The heritage tree needs a separate motion.
That really is not intended...
You have candlelight. I know, it's kind of atmospheric, right?
Okay.
It's not intended to pass simultaneously with the other ordinance.
Yeah.
It was to protect heritage trees with the ordinance that you just told me to redraft that will protect heritage trees.
It's a subset of the...
It is.
That's true.
It is. So again, I'll just go back to, is anybody on this board interested in having a uniquely separate heritage tree ordinance wherein the village is willing to take on the cost of protecting a outstanding specimen of desirable species, one of the largest and oldest trees in the village, and one of distinctive form, size, age, and location, and/or historical significance? Keep in mind, we do not have to accept the tree that is put before us. I think it considers, there should be considered separately.
You know, I, I hear what Jeff's saying, because they're already protected with the legislation that we're crafting now. I do think, though, I don't know how to say it, like, I think, I think we need the educational component, and then maybe come back and even, we could amend even the existing legislation to be slightly more specific about heirloom trees.
If I was going to do a special protection for heritage trees, that would be in the ordinance that you just...
That we just, that's what I'm saying, that we would amend this in some way.
Okay. So then the follow-up question is, would we like to have a program like that which we initially created and asked him to, to write this legislation? Do we want to put something like this in this treaty ordinance as a subset to where the village is willing to take on the expense of unique and separate trees?
I'm fine identifying and having a program for, for heritage trees, but I think we really need to craft what that looks like in terms of expense and how that's handled, and the fact that it's sort of voluntary on the homeowner's side, I think slightly misses the mark a little bit on it, because we're already saying we want to protect the entire canopy.
Sure.
You know.
All right, so let's table it.
So I think we need some more homework there.
So let's table it, let's just work on the existing tree ordinance.
Yeah, because at least we have, got some legislation going.
Yeah, we'll move from there.
Yeah, and thanks, thanks to everybody also for comments. Really appreciate that. Okay, next up, Climate Smart Environmental Board, and I know there's, is it in the package?
Yes.
Yes, okay. And staff did some research on this, and, Ruthie, did you want to speak to any of this, or just in terms of what was...
As we can see, we received comments from Churchville. The other two villages provided comments, and might be a little confusing as to their statements, but basically, the question was who, how is it made up? And one of them said the village board and ancillary department heads and consultants is needed. The other one said the mayor and me, which probably is the clerk, so, so that's all we got back, after reaching out to our fellow villagers.
I mean, I definitely like the idea of staff being part of this, because they're already so much a part of, you know, implementing this program and really tracking things, you know. And again, we have an arborist, we have you, Zach, you know, I think you're logical choices for this, you have tremendous resources professionally as well. So, and then this, Steve's not, wasn't able to be here tonight, but I know this also is part and parcel of, I don't know, the best practices for being a climate smart community and a clean energy community, so.
So then are we thinking of pulling primarily the members from staff and crew?
Yeah, I mean, we could certainly start, start with that, just to get it kind of up and running, you know, and then we can certainly expand it with, you know, perhaps some residents that are, you know, are interested, but I think just in terms of kind of getting it up and running, we certainly could start, you know, Steve's been tracking it, you have, Matt is clearly a tremendous resource, Matt Mantion, he's, he's a professional arborist. So that at least can give us, I think, the underpinnings of what we need to move forward. And then we could maybe add on a couple more people as needed, you know. But this at least means, starts to meet the requirements, as I understand, am I correct? Yeah, okay.
Seems like what the other committees are doing.
Yeah.
A task force is what you're...
Well, no, it's, it's a standing, it's a standing committee, and they meet, sometimes they meet a couple times a year. I know the towns board has been meeting very regularly, because they really have a tremendous amount of initiatives that are much larger scale, certainly than ours. So they have a meeting very, very regularly, and I think it just varies with, with each community, how often they meet. I think, though, they generally meet a minimum of twice a year, and then, most of them, I think, that I know, meet quarterly, you know, just track.
From what I read, what I discerned was that the first step was they formed a task committee, and the task committee then created this, recommended people for the Climate Smart Community Board. So I'm wondering what our process is. Do we put out on the village website that we're seeking people who have this interest, and they give us their information, and that how, are you just talking about setting up a task force based on our staff, and that's our task force?
I'm thinking just, just to get it going, just to have our staff just set it, you know, set it up, and then we can, they can come back to the board and say, hey, this is kind of where we are, this is sort of the format, and then we could round it out, maybe with some residents, I love that.
Okay.
You know.
Just to get it going. So we'll be looking at the code enforcement officer.
Our superintendent of DPW.
And then the arborist.
And then the arborist, yeah.
And then the mayor, as well as you.
And then the mayor.
Yeah.
Okay. So I have Steve Matt, Zach, mayor. Could I recommend that when we do start to reach out to residents, that maybe we ask somebody from the arboretum, that might be a great connection.
Oh, I think it should be open to everybody, for sure.
Right, I mean, that would be like a standard, resident volunteer group.
Yeah. But anyway, I, you know, I think just to get it up and running for that. And then we have the resolution, Jeff, you...
Somebody did, I didn't do it.
Oh, that's their, that's their resolution, you just said.
No, somebody made it into Village Pittsburgh, I don't know who did it.
Oh, that's very impressive.
Yeah.
I'm going to talk with somebody.
Okay. So we have the resolution, so the, the, the action then this evening would be for us to pass the resolution to say we are at least going to set up this initial committee.
Set up the task.
Okay.
With those four names.
Yes, yes, exactly, exactly, just to get it...
And there's going to be a Climate Smart Community Coordinator.
Pardon me?
Is there going to be a Climate Smart Community Coordinator?
The mayor.
It, it could be me, but also it could even be Steve as well.
I was going to say Alexandria's going to be.
Oh, actually Alexandria, she should be on there, you're right, because she really does pull from both of the programs, she knows both programs, I think she would be better than me, really.
Yeah, R G N E as well.
Yeah, that's true. She handled the R G N E issue today. Okay, so, does that make sense then, everybody? So the administrator, the coordinator would be our deputy clerk, Alexandria Torreson.
Can we just say deputy clerk and assign a name?
Yeah, deputy clerk.
That way you don't have to reveal his name.
Yeah, so just a couple of things, a little background, and then we'll come right to the residential comments. So this is, the Climate Smart Community in New York requires this. We did ask the town if we could piggyback on them, they said they're too busy, certainly understandable. So on the website for the Climate Smart Community, in order to start this action and to qualify, you have to submit the following three things. A copy of the resolution, an executive order that establishes it, if another local community is it that's, you know, can be signed, a list of the task force members and the organization groups they represent. This member list must show that the task force include representatives from the local government and from the community. The affiliation of each member must be listed. These official affiliations could include resident, city planner, town board member, and/or the name of the local organization that the member is representing. So just the specific on that, it says, "from the local government and from the community." So that is a pretty definitive, we have to have a member of the community, unless you're considering members of the local government, such as yourself, mayor, who is a member of the community, but...
That has happened in the past, that's why I, because I know there's communities that they just have it, literally, it's internal, you know. I mean, it's up to you guys, whatever you want to do, but at least it just get it going.
I suppose I'm okay submitting it as such as what we talked about here, and if they kick it back and say, hey, we need more, then we give it to them.
Yeah, we can just add it on.
The third thing is meeting minutes, including sign-in sheets and other records of attendance from two task force meetings held within the past year. So that's kind of interesting. It's almost like you have to establish it, then you have to do it a couple times, put the minutes down, and then you can submit to say you've actually done it and you've...
Welcome to a state government program.
Yeah. So the only thing that I would like to see maybe, so this task force, I'd like to have terms, even if they're loosely defined. It'd be nice if task force appointees were two terms, right? Something should contain how long any given individual listed is on the task force. That could carry on beyond, you know, let's, let's say I'm appointed, I run for office, and do I stay on or not? So I, I think the way that it's done, your appointments would be for a period of two years, and maybe we could stagger them a little bit if they're in the community, I guess we could, I, I'd just like to have this language be a little more buttoned up on that.
Okay, do we, but here's a question for, for Jeff then. If we just pass the resolutions that stands tonight, then we could hone it and say it's going to be two-year, three-year term, whatever, or do we, do we do every single thing?
You mean, could you pass another resolution?
Yeah.
Amended.
Amended or something.
Yeah.
I mean, it's interesting, because this, this is the template that came from the program. This is the exact template, they weren't looking for, so this would be on the board in terms of us establishing a policy of what we would want for term limits.
Yeah, and so...
As I understand it.
You know, it's asking, whereas the C S C task force will consist of community members, municipal representatives, and other relevant stakeholders, and if we're adopting it tonight with just members internally mostly, right, without additional appointments or understanding of terms, you know, I, I wonder, sure, maybe we can get started, but I'd just as well see this come back next time cleaned up a little. I would like to have terms of the members, the size, what's the smallest or the largest that we could have, so, you know, maybe we could let it get up to nine, but no fewer than five. Doesn't really matter to me if we have more people who want to participate or not.
Hold on, wielding.
Yeah, well, okay, well, some minimum size then, some minimum size with at least one member of the community outside of...
Could we differentiate between the task force and the community, the Climate Smart Community Group? In other words, you have, you sort of have the guide, the guiding force, and then you branch out and bring in the community members. But what you're indicating is that one of these initial task force members must be what they're saying is a community member.
I think so.
So we need, I would think that we would want to reach out as a board to the community and say, would you be interested in serving on a task force? And then we would have our other names of our staff to be added to, to that, but...
I want to talk about the timeframe, because we are, this is an underpinning for us to be eligible for all kinds of other opportunities. So if we could at least just kind of get this going and then amend it and, you know, say, yeah, let's expand it, but can we just get it going so we can be eligible for additional funding?
You're saying it's not necessary to have the community, this is a suggestion only to community member.
Yeah.
The task force could include the following.
Sure, we can, we can, we can come back, we can, if, even at the next meeting, if we just even can get this piece going, we could even at the next meeting say, you know what, you can only have a one-year term, and we're going to have 18 people from the community, and we're going to, you know, in other words, if we can just maybe get this piece kind of up and running, so we can put this back into the portal with New York State to let them know that, yes, we've done this, which makes us eligible for, right away for other things. That's all I'm thinking of. However you want to do it, great, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, I tend to agree with that as well. I, I think this is about checking a box. I think that it makes it pretty efficient for us to adopt and, and, you know, get the credits if it's just village staff and the mayor, and the mayor is certainly a member of the community. And so I think that, you know, this, this does the job, and later on, you know, maybe we have like a climate board like the town, and that's more community, and this is really how it gets done as far as village government goes, and that would be fun, too.
Okay, so then, so let's take that and run with it, right? Where we approve this, and as it stands now, the appointments, anybody beyond what's in the staff would come back to our board, right? And I would just simply say, as we expand it outside of the administration, that it would be nice to have it buttoned up, but to the extent that it's just internal as part of the administration, I would say this is fine.
Okay, is there a motion? Yes, Lily.
Where it indicates that the person who is, who is managing the task force as chair and serving at the liaison and the chief executive officer interfacing, and so they're the ones who would bring the others to the attention of the, of the board, or...
Everything would come in.
We, as a board, solicit.
I think the word liaison sums it up.
So they are not in charge of bringing people to the table. They, they're just, they're, they're, they go between.
Yeah, liaison.
Yeah.
That's my understanding of the word liaison, maybe there's a different interpretation.
So I think this is, this is basically Alexandria quarterbacks it, brings everybody together within the village, and then moves it forward. So I will make a motion to adopt the legislation with...
The resolution.
The resolution, sorry, with the following four members. The mayor, Steve, Zach, and Alexandria.
And Matt.
And Matt Mantion.
And Matt.
Yeah.
He's also on the staff.
And Alexandria will be the community coordinator?
And, yep. I don't... And so Jeff, just to clarify, when we create this, can we create the legislation with those five people embedded, or are we creating it, and then is the mayor appointing those five people?
This is a resolution.
So, the task force and the people in that task force is a resolution, not a mayoral appointment? So, this task force is not mayoral appointment, or is it just the coordinator's?
Well, I think it's a mayoral appointment, but I'm not sure exactly what their authority is once they're appointed. I don't think they have authority to do anything, right? There was, I assume it's more of a suggestion type.
Advisory? In advisory capacity?
So, is my motion with those five people okay?
Yep.
All right.
I second.
Okay, we have a second. Roll call.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lickens.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passed.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Oh, it's after six, we switch to the public hearing.
You can.
Yeah. Okay, we're gonna have the continuation of the public hearing for nine South Main Street. There's a representative here. Please come up and pull the chair up, and you have a seat and...
I have candles in my car that I bought at Costco in case you need it.
Oh, man.
Yeah, we might need them. We had them all on sale, so I had all these stuff in my car.
Mayor Plummer, I will find out Mr. Swuman is online.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
Mr. Swuman is online, I can...
Oh, okay, okay, that's right, he's with us. Hi, Mr. Swuman.
I've allowed him.
And your name, name and address?
Stuart Levy.
Nice, Stuart. Okay, welcome.
Welcome.
Okay, so, this is, we're going to be continuing the public hearing. We left it open, and since that time, you expanded your menu?
Correct. I have all that information. I think it was sent to you.
The board has it, and we're all still delighted, there's beef on wax for those of you who...
Has the menu.
Yes, indeed. Okay.
Anything could be.
Yeah, there you go. So, is there any other questions that the board has at this time of the application?
Since our last meeting, I've not received any communication if anybody else might advise me, if they have, with regards to the hours of operation of other restaurants in the community, and the approvals and special permits that were approved, and what those hours were.
Is that something?
Not to you.
Okay.
Sorry, thank you.
I'm here, too.
Yeah.
Hi, Brad.
Hi, how are you, everybody?
And how does this affect this application? I'm not understanding that.
So, it affects this application in the following way. This is a restaurant, and all restaurants, Steve, not Steve, I'm sorry, Jeff, if you could clarify, we talked about this last time, restaurants, the consistency of the hours of operation is important in that what other restaurants are approved for, if all of a sudden we started approving restaurants for two hours or one hour past any other restaurant, we did that two, three times, then those restaurants could come back and say, "Hey, why are we restricted, you're approving others, you know, beyond what you gave us approval for?" And so, there's a necessity to keep the hours of operation of restaurants consistent through prior applications, and I've asked on multiple occasions to see what those hours of operation of prior approval are, and I haven't seen anything.
So, well, it's a special permit in use, and should be geared condition by its condition here is in the community. So, it might be that Restaurant A is fine, open until 10:00, 11:00. Restaurant B is fine, open until 2:00. Some restaurants are grandfathered in by way of their hours, some bars are grandfathered in. So, there is nothing in our code that sets a uniform time for that. This has all been handled with the matter of hours of commitment, and the board generally tries to keep it in line with what other restaurants, or what other permits have been granted. So, that's generally if it...
So, suppose, as I was, we're not looking for lunch 3 o'clock.
At the time of closure.
Oh, closing time during the week, 11:00.
Right.
The weekend's probably anywhere between midnight, I think.
What does that mean, between the midnight?
Midnight 1:00, you know, I mean, that...
Well, that has to be tied down, because the board, the grants for permit has to have the hours.
Correct, so, probably, I mean, you know, like, you know, if there's a liquor license involved in here, I mean, technically you could serve alcohol, too, but...
Only before...
Right, the restaurant would, the restaurant would be open at all times, obviously. So, you know, 11:00 during weekdays, and I would probably say midnight on the weekends.
Or, you know, can I speak?
Sure, Brad.
I was gonna say that on weekends, again, we talked about it before, you know, in the summertime, it's light till 9:30, it's a beautiful day, or night and stuff, you may have people in there till 2:00. Again, if we're not busy at 12:00, 1:00, or actually during the week in the winter, if we're not busy at 10:00, we will probably close. But, again, with the weather and the hours and everything, it's definitely a change from February to, you know, June, July. But our plan is to be open and serving food, and hopefully we can do lunch, and, because I think that's really warranted in the village, that if we open up for lunch versus just opening up at 4:00, and right now it's dark early, I mean, we'd be closing after three or four hours. So, we're gonna try to maintain, you know, basically a full restaurant, and, you know, keep, we'll be serving food for quite a bit of those hours.
So, the, I'm still getting around the answer here, Brad. For the special permit purposes, we're going to need an opening time, you're not required to open in, and a closing time, and you're not required to stay open until closing. Either ways, to have the parameters of those in the special permit.
Okay. I would say we are going to open up for lunch, and we will close during the week at, right now, at about 11:00. And then on the weekends, we'll be open up till, depending, until 12:00 to 2:00. So, we'll be serving food seven days a week. We'll be open at 12:00 for lunch, and we will try to continue and be very consistent and open all these hours.
I think maybe for simplicity reasons, if you just generalize, open at 12:00 noon, close at 2:00 PM or 2:00 AM, and then whatever you want to do based on your abilities, you have that, those parameters, so just give us...
I love it.
Yeah, that's...
I think that's perfect, you know?
Yeah, Brad, I agree with that. That was what I proposed, I mean...
I mean, I'm online looking at the Pittsburgh Pub, and they're open 11:30 in the morning, and they close at 2:00 AM, so, you know...
And there's times that you can close at 11:00.
Right. That'll be a problem, but that'll be the...
Yeah, I heard that, Brad, that...
Yeah. Good.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So, the answer is...
12 to 2:00.
Well, it's kind of a normal, yeah, restaurant.
The Pittsburgh Pub, Main Street.
Okay. Any other questions? Yeah, I know, I just said, the air's so dry in here, it got to me.
I'm sorry, again, Mayor, I don't mean to be disrespectful, I'm looking at the Pittsburgh Pub's website right now, and the hours of operation are 11:00 AM to 10:00 or 11:30 PM at the latest on Friday and Saturday.
But they have the parameters to go to 2:00 AM.
Are you, are you on the special permit?
No, I'm looking, I'm looking, I'm not on their website, I'm actually on, I'm not sure what page. They, I, they have a 2:00 AM pour, so they can be open till 2:00 AM.
I think we probably would have to pull their special use permit to see what they're actually...
Take a look at it.
...proved for.
I don't think they're open.
If I were guessing.
They're probably not, but they have a pour till 2:00 AM.
Right.
Again, what Lisa said, I think, makes sense.
Do you think it's just an hour?
Yeah, just, you know, you have the parameters.
You don't want them open 24 hours, you know, you don't want anything late, right? That's your, probably the main concern is top, like, 12 to 2:00, and then that's the perimeter. So, if they're open at later than that, then there was an issue, because they said 2:00, so...
And that would be 2:00 on Friday and Saturday, and 11:00 PM on Sunday through...
Well, we...
Totally up to you.
It's up to, they have the parameter...
Amazing week, am I correct? 12 to 2:00.
You can establish within those parameters.
That's what I...
Right, I think that's probably the way to go, is we'll just do 11:00 or 12:00 to 2:00, seven nights a week, and, you know, summertime or whatever, and then we'll adjust to what you think, so at least we're covering everything.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions from the board, otherwise we'll reopen the hearing?
So, I just heard 1:00 to 2:00, yeah.
I can say 12 to 2:00, but do you want to do 11:00?
Well, we'll have people there at 11:00, and, you know, be first, prepping and, you
know, getting everything ready. So, if somebody ever came in at 11:30, we would try to get them a cup of coffee and try to, you know, help them out, or, you know...
Okay, so, just give us one starting time, and let's run with that.
Okay, we're gonna serve food from 12:00 until 2:00 are the hours we're gonna be open.
Okay, we all heard that, we're all on the same page.
11:00.
Yeah. Sorry, Brad.
Yes, sir.
If you're serving at 12:00, don't you want to let people in the door at 11:30 sometimes?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, we can't have 12 as your starting time?
11:00.
Yeah, that's why I mentioned, I've got people in there at 9:00 or 10:00.
No, second, Brad, excuse me.
The doors can open at 12, 11:30.
How about you start to let customers in at 11:00? Can we do that? Is that where you're going? Is that what I'm understanding, Stuart?
Brad, let me speak.
Well, what we do at the Pittsburgh Pub for years and years, you know, we usually, whether the lunch starts at 11:30 or 12:00, but the doors are open, and the customer can come in, and we are there to serve them and take care of them. If they walk in at 11:00, we will take care of them.
We'll figure it out, Brad.
We just need the time, we just need, we need a time to go on the permit.
11:00 AM to 2:00 PM.
2:00 AM.
2:00 AM.
Okay, there we go.
11:00 to cover it all.
That was so tough. Okay, okay.
That's what I said.
All right.
I'd like to make a motion to open the public hearing.
Oh, that was, yeah, that was, the mayor was just gonna chew, yeah, okay.
I'll second.
Yeah, roll call, please.
Trustee Lanfair.
Just, it's better.
Trustee Lanfair.
Public hearing, motion.
Oh, the motion wasn't...
Made and seconded, yes.
Okay, yeah.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lickens.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Yeah.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, the public hearing is open, is there anyone who wishes to speak on this agenda item? Is there anyone online?
No comments from the board.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I make a motion that we approve.
To close the hearing.
We have to close the public hearing first, I'm sorry. I make a motion to close the public hearing.
I second.
Roll call, please.
Trustee Lickens.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, it's back to the board, is there a motion?
Not yet.
Is there more discussion later?
Discussion, of course.
Okay.
So, again, this has been the fourth time that I've asked to see special permits of prior restaurants. This is the first restaurant special permit that I've seen since I've been on the board. Okay? We approved one for the Rachels, the new establishment pub that was gonna go in there. The hours were, as proposed for that, were different, in 11:00 AM to 2:00 AM, Monday through Sunday, right? 12 days a week, in that I've not seen any prior special permit for any other restaurant in the community, and what was before us today had closing times of 10:00 PM, Monday through Sunday, and that I've spoken to nobody in the community with regards to extending the hours of operation as a restaurant until 2:00 AM every day through the week. I write, if we approve this application, as it's been discussed, I am going to vote no, but that is why.
There also is another approval of a restaurant to go into the location on the corner of...
The Noodle Church.
Yeah, the Noodle House, the corner of churches.
There is.
And they, yeah.
And that was till 2:00 AM.
And those, those were not, that was not till 2:00 AM.
No.
It was absolutely not. So, it's not that I don't appreciate the application, it's just at those hours of operation as a restaurant until 2:00 AM, I have some initial reservation that it wasn't before the public in such a way, that I would rather approve it with a little bit more of a constricted hours of operation, closer at least a little bit to what was on the application than 11:00 to 2:00 AM.
I think they can be open till, do you have a 2:00 AM pour?
Yeah.
So, I think typically what happens is it's 2:00 AM pour, and then service stops sometime before that typically, you know?
Right, because legally, New York State will allow you to pour till 2:00 AM.
Which is, we can't control that.
I...
And all the drinks, it must be off the bar at 2:30.
Control of the license, but we control...
Oh, no, the hours, I understand that, but I'm just saying, that's what his license sets, I'm just going...
But that doesn't tell us that we have to let the establishment stay or can pass 4:00 PM hypothetically. We can, we can assign the hours of operation, and then within that, you can serve food or drinks, and you can serve drinks for two hours after the last meal is served. So, if we give 2:00 AM, they can serve till midnight, and then I think serve for two more hours thereafter.
And then Thursdays is open till 2:00 AM, that's another...
Thursdays is a tavern.
No, I understand, I'm just, you know, talking about the context of...
Sure.
What's within the block, basically.
Again, but I don't want to assign a tavern ordinance to a restaurant ordinance, that's a bigger discussion, we're approving a restaurant. And so, I like that location as a tavern, lounge, restaurant, anything, the hours of operation that existed before, I absolutely think are perfectly reasonable in this community, and I'd firmly support the application, it's just the initial reservation that at least board ordinances, I've asked for special permits on other restaurants to the community, and I do know that the one that we did approve that you guys just referenced, were not till 2:00 AM, Monday, Friday, right? And so, as much as I like everything, the hours of operation, for me, I'm okay with 2:00 AM on Friday, Saturday, but I'd like to see it maybe be, I don't know, midnight or something on the weekdays, or 11:00, and that allows you to serve till midnight.
Brad, what do you think?
My thought is this, I'm fine with that, but we were just trying to encompass everything, we thought it would make it easier with the board mentioning that, but if during the week, Sunday through Wednesday, you want to make it 12:00, I can live with that.
Yeah, let's do that. Sunday through...
But Thursday, Friday, Saturday will be two.
Yeah, so you pick up the Thursday different than, okay, Sunday is midnight, and then Wednesday through Saturdays, 2:00 AM.
Perfect.
That's exactly what I was thinking, because during the week, you're...
So, Dave, for clarification, the thing your concern was that the way it was presented to residents was with these hours?
Yeah.
And then we switched it to the 2:00 AM?
We're already past what's here, it's just closer and with a little more reflectiveness on what we're doing.
If you want to...
I have, I...
Just a little bit.
Okay, okay, so...
That's fine.
Is there a motion?
Make a motion to approve the application with the hour adjustments that we discussed, 11:00 to midnight, Sunday through Wednesday, 11:00 to 2:00 AM, Wednesday through Saturday.
No, Thursday.
I'm sorry, Thursday, Friday, Saturday.
We have a motion and a second. Roll call, please.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Lakin.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfair.
Hi.
Trustee Coe.
Hi.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay.
I like that, I know that was fine.
Thank you very much, everybody.
Thanks for asking here, Brad.
Have a great holiday season.
You too.
Thank you.
And have a fee for the life.
Be my wife.
Yeah, you're all, you're all...
My wife.
Make sure you remember all the things when we go.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
It's Ray, Paula. Okay, next up, the, the Wack House, okay, the LED streetlight conversion. And now there's all kinds of things in the packet that everybody has received, just for the public. This is part of our sustainability efforts here in the Village to continue to convert our streetlights to LED for best practices. I think right now, Zach, what we have with the streetlights we own, we have about 85% of our village streetlights that we own already converted to LED. So this is working with RG&E to facilitate this conversion and take over the lights, basically.
At your table, there is a contract from RG&E that does give price as requested, that just came in, so I apologize for that.
Just to clarify, it's not to take over the lights, it's just...
Take, take, Zach, you're right, I'm sorry, the conversion, you're right, I take that back, you're right, that was a different discussion. Yeah, and also, I know they are converting a number of the HARP, the Historic HARP lights in Brighton as well, so they've already initiated this with another municipality. How many, how many lights are they doing in Brighton?
Uh, it's gotta be close to 1,000, I would imagine.
Okay, about the same lights, same lights that we have, the HARP lights, the Historic HARP lights, so, yeah, this just came in. And I know, there was a, staff had a meeting with members of RG&E earlier today.
Yes.
Just to respond to some of the questions.
If I may?
Yeah.
The, currently, the Village of Pittsburgh is not a member of the Climate Smart Community. We have adopted a resolution saying that we want to be, we just have adopted a task force, we've assigned five people, or appointed five people to it. Once those five people have two meetings and associated minutes, they can then effectively have a task force in place and it can be approved. But until we're a member of that Climate Smart Community, if we do this LED streetlights, we will lose the points because it will be after the fact. So my question is, is as much as yes, I'm on board with this, why do we do it now instead of waiting till we can get points?
We can have our task force meetings pretty quickly, back to back.
Yes, you can.
Which is probably what we were talking about.
Okay, so then, so can we just punt until we get the approval?
So why don't we do the...
To make sure that you guys are all okay with...
Yeah, if you can take, you know...
Okay, that's presented first.
Yeah, because if there's any, anything else, they, yeah, we know, they just gave us the contract, so, yeah, Justin.
Did you ask my first, Trustee Lanfair?
We had a question at the last meeting regarding LED lights because someone added, brought it to my attention, that there had been some adverse health effects connected with the LED, blue, the blue aspect of those lights. And we didn't have the answer we thought you might have as to, as to the type of LED lights that we are using to replace in our streetlights, whether they would meet the criteria for the more, the less blue and the more warm light.
I think...
I can speak, I can speak to that. And also, it's documented in the additional information that's in your packet. My understanding, Zach, is that our streetlights are the warm white, the soft glow, and they are 70 watt, they, they, they're 70 watts, so it's what, 3,000?
70 watt.
No, I understand, but so it's 3,000 lumens, up to 3,000. And so the concern about the blue light is for the much brighter ones that go up to 5,000, you know, much brighter. So we're within the range, if you, if you can take the time at some point to look through that information.
I glanced through.
Provided. We are within those guidelines that are safe, safety, for safety, with emitting much less of the, the blue that people are concerned about, because it's the warmth, the warm light, it's not a bright white and at the lower end of the spectrum.
They're offering either 3,000 K color temperature, which is gonna be a warmer, orange, more yellow color, or 4,000, which would be similar to what you can see in the streetlights along South Main Street, in Business District area. So those are gonna be the more white, not to the loose end of the spectrum, which would just be more of a white-ish color.
But the range, if you look at the research that's in our packets, and you probably haven't had a chance to see it either, I don't think.
I do.
Did you, did you see, I don't, you know, because there's a lot there.
Yeah.
But the, the bottom line of the research is that if anything that's at the much higher end, you know, 3,000 seems to be kind of that benchmark, is really where the concerns potentially can kick in, so...
3,000 is what we have along the, have on the change list.
Right.
And that's what's proposed.
Yes, that's what's proposed.
Okay.
And that was part of the discussion today with, my understanding, with the representatives from RG&E.
Yeah, they did say that there was one streetlight that has been converted on South Street that has the 3,000 lumens, 70 watts equivalent of LED. So it's not that I'm trying to drag down South Street to see if I can...
Me too.
...an idea of how bright that actually is. Because the, the alternative would be for a brighter bulb, you could still go with the 3,000 Kelvin, which is the more light, but to see if the, the 3,000 lumens would be sufficient for a light in there.
Okay, yeah.
The concern really was the spectrum.
Yeah.
The blueness, because over time, apparently that deteriorates and they're having this residual, afterwards it like turns really blue and purple and is disturbing to wildlife as well as...
Exactly, exactly.
As well as people.
And that's, and that's why, that's why we, because we have these discussions with RG&E, and they're very aware of it.
Yeah, if the lighting gets to that point, then we just call it an RG&E, this is the fact that the light needs to be...
But nonetheless, if we start out with a 3,000, that's, that's where we are. I think, I think it's been asked and answered and it's been addressed also, people want to really drill down on that research in the packet. Yeah, Justin?
I just wanted to see if we could make it a little more clear in the, in the packet, maybe next time, now that we've got the dollar amount. And I understand that we were missing that before, but right now it just says like LED streetlight conversion in the packet, and then we've got a lot of research about benefits of LEDs and that kind of stuff. But with the restaurant, you know, we've got the permit, we've got the application, it's clear the reason to approve the restaurant. With the Climate Smart Community Board, we've got a resolution that's proposed, and with this one, it's like LED streetlight conversion. It'd be great to see like, okay, this many streetlights, $15,000.
And that's...
You know, closer to the, closer to the resolution, you know, in, or closer to the motion in the agenda, it's really clear what the...
That was asked many times to get something clearer than the initial you got, and today, this is just came, I can't even say 3:40.
Because I mean, I spent hours on, you know, reading the packet and I couldn't remember like what we're supposed to...
Yeah, I did not.
Their lack of clarity is consistent.
That was what they said, and Alexandria's been pushing, they had the meeting today. I do have a list, but, I mean, it's microscopic.
Okay, but we knew like the amount of, the number of lights we're looking to replace, right? Or, or they would...
Yes, I was making...
I mean, ideally just making the agenda similar to the motion that we anticipate making, you know, looking for the board to approve replacement of 15 streetlights for $15,000, whatever.
That is what has been asked probably no less than eight times of RG&E.
I, I will change the wording in the future to reflect the purchase, more conversion, whatever, this was just the way it was put the last few times, no one answered it.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
In the meantime, we'll try to get that, so after our first two meetings.
There we go.
Thank you.
Back to that.
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, so, where are we on this? Do you want, do you want that information before you make a decision then? That you, you know, I mean, because we all just got this. You want to defer to the next meeting, you want to take some action, you know, where are we in terms of moving forward or not? Or additional information?
I'd be okay approving the move forward, however contingent upon the acceptance of the Climate Smart Community designation. So it's an approved resolution, but it's contingent upon having it be accepted and points being awarded and, and knowing that.
Well, why don't we have Dorothea come back with the appropriate way that we can, like Justin said, document it in a way that we have clear information, because by the time it comes back to us, you guys can have your two task force meetings and we can just move on from...
You're on the beach tomorrow, so...
You have two weeks.
We'll, you know, work on this internally, we'll see what we can...
Yeah, I mean, it sounds like it's pretty simple, Justin, some format to get it.
A little bit more time than a little bit.
Yeah, and then bring it back in the format that actually...
I think it's just, if we're gonna spend 15 grand, it's good to have it somewhere in the, in the 15 pages of our LED.
I think we're all in agreement, no, I agree. They, they, as I just said, they are consistent in their lack of clarity.
I know.
Okay, so I think we're good.
Okay.
So we'll add this to the December agenda, we'll put in the contract, I will supply the list of streetlights.
And we'll, we'll have our task force meetings.
Somebody can count those up.
If you could, in that same part, have either the agenda or somewhere else, have the email coming back from New York State, "Dave, welcome to the Climate Smart Community."
I will work with the partners involved in that.
I'll read that.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Yeah, I think actually, I think that, that would just be acknowledged in the portal, you know, we have that, the portal that Rob, anyway, we can sort that, okay.
Okay, awesome.
Alrighty, so that's gonna be December, just making a note here. Okay, code definitions.
I have nothing to say, moving on.
We're done?
We're done, we're done with this one.
You have nothing to say, David?
Yeah, disappoint me.
I have to teach you.
At some point, I want to come back with some sort of more accelerated review and approval process, where it's restaurants or lounges or tavern, something.
Somehow streamlined a bit.
Where it's streamlined, where when somebody looks at the code and looks at our buildings in downtown and they say, "What can I do there?", that they see a P for restaurant, right? With an asterisk, and it says, "Refer to the overlay, the restaurant overlay district", right? I want it to be a permitted use, not a special permitting use, because as a landlord, you're going out to find tenants, you don't want to have to go through the special permit process to get it, it slows you down by a month, month and a half. That vacancy is not valuable to that land, that property owner, they're just gonna go and find permitted uses as fast as possible.
Okay.
So that's a later, but see something else.
We'll circle back, as they say.
Okay.
Okay, next up, GPI, South and Wood Street, and Dorothea, there's some additional information you provided.
Zach and I met, and the mayor met with Caitlin with the change order that was requested by the board, when, remember, this is, John was supposed to board about the need of the change order.
From GPI?
Yeah.
Freeland?
Freeland, he, if you remember, he came to the meeting and the board said they would entertain it if they got the change order. We met with her, we received the change order. I have concerns with the change orders related to costs, because it's quite substantial. The point of a bid is to avoid these kind of change orders and would be frowned upon. Zach has his recommendation to the board to offset the concerns that I have, because it's quite substantial.
I don't have it in front of me, but I think it's one through five of the itemized list, the priority, the item six, which is additional inspections. I want more information on what that exactly looks like and moving forward. First, I want to see all this other stuff being done, but my recommendation would be to approve the...
The first five items and then circle back?
The sixth is the big one.
Yeah.
Yeah, and we just want to know, we want to know how they came up with, when they did the initial bid, and they, you know, they knew what the parameters of the project were, how did they come up with this dollar amount for somehow for additional inspections? When, you know, we're just trying to sort it, that's all, you know, just make sure we're all understanding.
Yeah, that, that would be determined really until, you know, we have a contractor on hand and ready to start work, so that's in anticipation of there being approximately three months worth of work to accomplish the project itself and the street completion, so.
So, so one through five really moves, it keeps us moving forward on the project?
Keeps us moving, gets us to the point where we get a contractor hired.
Yeah, yeah, really, sure.
This seems the small one, but does $1,200, $1,200 seem excessive for contacting 11 properties?
There is more to it than that. I think there's more contract information and other things with the property owners or the right of ways and different things. I think it's more extensive than just...
I thought that was just for mailing out.
It's not just a letter.
Quick phone call.
No, I'm fighting postage costs, no, that, I would agree with you on that, but I think it's a lot more than just a letter.
Yeah, okay.
So on number two, the prep review and finalized spec book, there was a comment in there that the Village did not have a construction contract boilerplate available. Once this is done, will we have a construction?
Yes.
Okay, so that's good, so that cost, whatever it may be for future things, that will come down materially.
Correct. If the sun cost is done.
Okay, the, number three, finalized contract documents for bidding, plans, specs, and estimate. It's, I, I guess I was a little surprised, that seems like a pretty standard thing that people would do as part of a larger project. And just in the item three of the letter, it didn't say that this task was underestimated or that this task was not identified, it just simply says, hey, we need to do this and here's the cost. And I'm thinking, how else would we have ever done this without that?
Not making excuses for that, but the only thing I can clunk with is that they've already exhausted a lot of time, planning, I think, and, and, I think they went to it.
Well, then that five grand should be in the number two and not in number three. So I, I guess my only reservation is, it seems like if we approve number three at five grand, we're basically approving something that we think was probably included in the original bid. Maybe not, but...
Why don't we take the questions back to him?
Yeah, that's, that's my question on three, and again, this is a little bit of, we want to move this thing forward, we gotta get it out there. And Zach, your comment is, is accept one through five, and if we accept one through five, then my question still stands, but I also understand that we gotta get this thing moving. So there's a little bit of me that's sort of like, hey, sometimes contracts come up and to your point, you might have extended your time and we just have to accept, right? But I would like to know why item three was not included as part of the normal bidding process. It just seems like a pretty standard thing that happens that we can't do. And again, I'm not trying to question there anything other than...
This is a question I would say that we did have with them, quite specific, and this is where we're at.
And, and there could be many other reasons why their time is needed and some additional funds are needed, it just seems like this one might have been something that was in the original amount. And number four, it does say during the bidding phase, this task includes responding to any requests for information from contractors, preparation of the tender, a thorough review of the contractor bids and a recommendation for award made in a letter to the Village. Isn't that part of this standard kind of expected work as well? And again, it doesn't say that it was not included in the original scope of the work, so I'm just, with item three and four, I'm, I'm sort of looking at it and saying, okay, that's 10 grand, but I don't know, yeah.
Why don't we call the original contract?
Sure.
But...
Um, I, to keep things moving, I'm not sure what to do at this point, because I, I agree that some of this stuff should have been just part of the contract and why it's listed as...
I, we, I think this is being asked.
Additional work, yeah.
It's been asked and answered by them.
Whether it's reviews, how do we go with that?
With this question for our attorney, would any more detailed discussion of this require an attorney-client session? Because this is about a legal contract.
Well, if it is, then it could certainly be an attorney-client meeting.
Could be, I'm sorry?
It could be an attorney-client meeting.
Yeah, I'm just thinking, you know, if there's a level maybe of detail here that, you know, the board maybe would want to, what we could do then is defer, we need an attorney-client anyway.
Correct.
So I, I'm thinking, maybe we just table this for now.
Come back to it.
And, yeah, because I think there's a level of detail here, because this is pertaining to a legal contract. Okay.
My follow-up is to Zach, your comment, we need to move forward. We got to get these roads done. And perhaps it's just misallocated in terms of what the additional costs are. But it would be nice if this was.
Yeah. And I think there's a greater level of detail that we would be able to discuss from a legal standpoint.
All right.
Okay. Next up, change of the village's fiscal year.
All right. So this is something that kind of came up a couple of times at NICOM. And the more I thought about it, the more I talked to myself, it seems kind of crazy. And I, I touched, Dorothy, about this a little bit because this has been brought up in past boards, the way our fiscal year starts and ends and how that relates to the election process and getting new boards in and having to deal with the budget. So currently, as you see, do you have this one here, Dave?
Yeah.
So. I passed it around, I'm sorry, it wasn't the original.
So currently, our fiscal year starts June 1st, it ends May 31st. Intensive budget work seems to go on, a little bit longer than that, but March through May. Elections are in March. The new board takes seats the second Monday of April. So significant work has been done by the past board on the budget. And then literally 45 days later, the new board has to approve last board's budget. So a con to me is a short amount of time for the new board to respond, to review, approve the past board's budget, all while orienting to a new role as trustee. So I think there's a lot going on that might dilute some of our abilities to, to really put forth a well thought about budget. So my change is to change the fiscal year to August 1st. It would end July 31st. So then again, the new board takes seat Monday the second. Then the new board has 90 days to literally develop their own budget and approve their own budget work. And the pros would be the new board works to develop their own budget. There's intensive budget work done in late July. That's when the intensive work is done. And we usually go to one time or one meeting a month at that time for summer hours, which will give us more time to spend on budget specific work. And give the new trustees three weeks' orient to their new role. So that's my proposal and I want to just open that up for discussion.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that to the board. Any thoughts from people?
My initial thought is I totally agree about the, it's a pain in the neck to have a transition of a board in the, in the middle of a budget process. And I think it's a really interesting proposal. I'd be interested to hear administratively, Dorothy.
I, I get where you're going and I think we're using the wrong tool. Okay. There's two ways to resolve this situation, actually, with new people coming into a budget process that's started. I would change your election cycle. Changing a fiscal year is very complicated. I reached out to NICOM and I'm still waiting. He went, oh.
That's not good.
And it's been a week. You have the capability of moving your election, which would be a lot easier because you're just being a short term change in the election cycle. I would either go to November or June. I think most are moved to November to go and coincide with other election cycles. But that would be a lot smoother because then you could keep your fiscal year because you're also just put out your stuff for your refuse district and everything else. Everything, we are so tied to the fiscal that changing the fiscal is more complicated than changing the election cycle.
So good idea of just a different approach.
I'm just saying, use a different tool.
Same result.
Yeah, still get the same result.
So do we know the reason or rationale why village elections are in March and not in November? Because I know that there has been some designated reasons or rationales as to why they kept it separate from.
I think it goes away.
I know there were two different ways over the years. I think that they liked being in that own little cycle. And then I know some that have moved it to June and then others have moved it to November. I think you have Webster that's June and then you got.
Fairport.
Fairport, that's December, I think, and then.
November.
December?
Fairport's November.
November. November, I'm saying, saying December, but they would take off this in January. So I think, you know, honestly, I think it's easier to move it to that.
So other options are either November or.
I know one of June. I, I don't know how Webster chose June, but.
Yeah, one, one other thing too is Governor Hokel passed a law that only affected towns and cities across New York State to sort of cycle their elections in November on, excuse me, on even years. So it starts to match up, you know, you have state, federal, you know, everything starts to match up. And NICOM was a little surprised that they didn't include villages to cycle with all the rest of the elections because they felt that it was, that you would get better participation, better voter turnout. That was, the last time I was there, that was a big discussion. So I don't know, they may even try to do something about that. And the town is currently starting that cycle. So it's cut off the November even year elections, yeah.
I mean, my particular thought is I would like to keep it separate from all the other elections because I think it dilutes it. It brings it to, I mean, I think that speaking to residents, they like more of a nonpartisan kind of focus so that people can really own out the issues. And since we're such a small local community, I would like to see it separate. So I don't feel comfortable at all bringing it into November. Some of the other actions I would be very much open to, but November I wouldn't.
I mean, but then again, like I said, you can move it to June.
Right.
I'm 100% on June.
Yeah, a campaign would be a lot easier.
Having worked with Monroe County Board of Elections, being part of the village election cycle, you're really one of the few people going in there to learn how to do it from the ground up. And you really get some one-on-one attention, the understanding of the election process, the timing of it. I think it really makes a lot more sense for a village, such a small group, to be more connected individually than part of the larger foray. I think it, it's a better format for trying to communicate things that are really so close to us and not be inundated with additional election material. So I do like it separate. And I think June would be fine, you know, walking around in the winter to knock on doors and say hi to everybody is not optimal, though you're more likely to be invited in. But I, I do think that June would be fine and I'd be very open to pursuing it.
Anybody else? I mean, I don't have a dog in the fight either way, whether it's June or November, I guess. I, I do know though, from working in a number of elections over decades, that whenever you consolidate, you know, local, state, federal, you have the greatest number of turnout and participation. You get much better participation as opposed, you know, I know you're saying, oh, there's a lot of noise and all that. I think our village is so unique. We have such a tremendous level of interest and we have vocal resonance and we have solid participation. I think either way, you know, I mean, some voters, it might be great, one-stop shopping, everything happens in November, we're good, you know. Other people maybe are June, they're getting ready to go, go away from summer, you know. And we have the issue, same thing here in March with snowbirds. So, you know, I think it's, it's definitely merits discussion, you know, changing that for sure. I'm, I'm fine with that.
To your point, I, I think participation is high in both. We have a very engaged community, feels that way to me. It would be interesting to see the percentages in the national or on a, on a November ballot versus non, certainly in an election year where the president and.
Oh, yeah, obviously, for sure. Yeah, and that, that's actually why, you know, the governor passed that, you know, they passed that law in New York State to cycle with midterm and then national, you know.
I like the keeping of the message local from the bottom up rather than the top down. So for me personally, especially having both caucus with the Democrats, but also running essentially an independent campaign after not obtaining the nomination, I found being on an independent cycle to be very valuable. And I think it matters to future potential trustees as well who might have the same challenges.
Okay. Oh, I see there's a comment.
Mr. Robert Portobello, Washington Avenue. During the 20 years I served on the executive board of the New York Conference of the Mayors, one of the consistent things that I heard almost every year in the training that was offered for new municipal officials was the benefit of having a separate election cycle specifically for the reasons that you stated, that the village issues are not overshadowed by national or state politics. And it really gives some light to some of the issues that happen, created to our listeners. So I would be in favor of keeping a spring election, whether it's March or June, either month, but not in November. Thank you.
Thanks so much for your comment and your insight. Yep, anybody else? Yes. Great.
Peggy Caribares, agreed to looking at changing the election cycle, what would it take to do that?
That's where we're talking.
If the board wants to change the process, I would have to reach out to NICOM and see how the stuff's involved in changing the election cycle.
Okay, so we have the action item to direct, Dorothy, to look at what that process would be and also to consult with Jeff as well, our attorney, you know, in terms of the mechanism for what that would look like and bring it back to the board.
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
All right. On my agenda here. Okay. Next up, hotel tax revenue opportunities. I know trustee Coe had wanted this on the item and then didn't want to take it off. I would like to still have this up for discussion. The staff has done some internal research, which I believe is in the packet. I think you put it in the packet, Dorothy. Yeah. And do you want to just speak about sort of how you guys just took a look at it? And I think it's just something that I found incredibly interesting.
The first request from the board was to look at other villages similar that have more of a touristy attraction because really that's where you're going to see the hotel tax hit. And we reached out and we got the rates and also the current hotels and what we're doing local. As you can see, the lowest is 3% tax up to as high as 6% and some are moving to 4%. So what I did is took this information, plus we did look at the local current STRs because we wanted to give the board the full scope of everything out there. So we didn't want to miss one component of this.
So you broke it down, just for the public, so you broke it down in different categories?
Yes, I did.
We have a hotel, we have the Del Monte Lodge.
Yep.
And we have a bed and breakfast.
Yep.
And, and at least right now, we have, what do you, what do you have down?
What I have, I, what I did is.
How many STRs?
There were 16.
16, okay.
What I did is their average of the cost room rate. I did it based on their rooms being occupied 50% of the time, which I googled from Rochester and it gave me 50, above 50%, but 50 seems like a safe number. I estimated the income. And then I did a proposed what the village would bring in through that tax at a 3% and a 4%. Obviously, if you want to look higher, I could look higher, but these are, to me, you know, if you're going to go in, maybe 3 seems a little low, go to 4, that seemed to be the higher of the average. But it's quite helpful. I mean, honestly, I think moving forward and having this happen, if you look at it this way, we're looking at multiple bonds and different things for debt, for roads. Here's your debt payment.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
I can't make it any simpler than that.
I mean, it's a significant revenue stream, even looking at roughly fairly conservative estimates, I think at a 50%.
Yeah.
So to me, that's why I, you know, I respect what you wanted to do, but I think this is just great information for our board. Our budget's just a little over $2 million annually. And if we look at a 4% projection at this point, we're looking maybe at a revenue stream of roughly $228,000. So I think that, you know, I can't, I can't not look at that. I think this is something that could be an opportunity certainly for us. It's not, you know, we're not going gangbusters, it's not 6%. We're just saying, hey, what can we do at 4%? And then the other thing too, you, I know you had spoken with the county about just the process, how the hell this happened.
Right, the process was we'd be self-collecting. So this would be revenue coming directly in.
Just direct.
Just like the gross utilities, just like your. Wow, I love when my brain just shorts right out.
You're due for a vacation, that's why.
That might be the case. Any other fee that we collect like this, it would come directly to us and we'd self-manage it all. So, you know, the best way I can do is that, look at revenue and go, what can I pay with that? Because that, that impacts roads and roads deserve big costs as we discussed earlier. Even if you took that STR number out, it's still a significant number.
Oh, it comes right in over the transom.
Yeah, it really does. So I think this is what the board asked from the staff, this is what we're providing you, and this is the best I could, way I could figure the possible revenue.
So thank you, Dorothy, this, this is great work and this really does help bring some light to, to the issue. I know that this has been visited before in other boards, right? And I guess, you know, the pro obviously is that great amount of money sitting there for us to be able to use. So what have the cons been and what has been our resistance in bringing this forward?
I think the board's never solved this detail. Correct me, Willie, we never went this far. I think it got stuck in the talking to someone.
Mistation of each state.
Yeah, it just never went to what is the number.
So you're really seeing substantial research, empirical data.
Right.
That I think helps us to maybe, you know, take an action.
Right, I think now you're seeing a number. Sometimes when you see a number, it goes, oh, yeah, wow, we do need that revenue. Because revenue sources are hard for a local municipality to find, you know. We normally would say, let's do passports, let's hand those passports, let's do, you know, there's so limited as to what we can do. And this is, this is right, I think.
Yeah, I think it's really, yeah, Justin.
Yeah, thank you very much for the research and thanks to Alexandria too. I was more skeptical about this before, but I think that seeing, seeing the data, seeing that other communities like this are, are doing it, it was surprising to me that all those communities were. And I think that the, the fact there's a precedent in other communities for this size that would bring in this kind of income is, is compelling to me. So it changes my, my perspective.
Yeah, me too. I mean, I, I didn't realize it either until I saw the numbers, I'm moving on that. So Willie, then the next step, if the board were to take action, it would be to.
I think it's back to Jeff.
Yeah, the two of us to figure out.
Figure out, yep, sort of how do we sort it and what's our next steps in this particular process, you know? Did you, I thought your hand was up, okay, we're just moving. Okay, all right. Oh, Bob, did you have your hand up again? Yes, another comment.
One caution, based on my own observation of the short-term levels in my neighborhood, the occupancy is much less than 50% and is probably closer to 20% than the two that I spoke to.
Yeah, thanks. I, I actually think that really what carries the day kind of with the research is the fact that we have a, quite a large hotel with 99 rooms.
And to, to pay there's always the possibility of another boutique or hotel or two.
You never know.
You never know.
Yeah, never know. So this at least gives us some underpinnings going forward, regardless of STRs. I, I hear where you're going with that for sure. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I think STRs are, are not the most substantial part of this. And so I, I think that is a good insight. But I, I think that the, the important part for me too is the, the research about other municipalities, the fact that this is being done.
Yeah.
This is a thing. And the STR factor, we might be off, that's okay.
I'd like to make a comment. So if you're looking at the three components, you have the Del Monte, you know, and those are kind of private business entities. And then when you start to go to the local STRs, those are residential, so we're taxing residents basically at the STR.
No, you're still taxing the people that stay.
When you, when you pay your bill, it is, it is the surcharge on your bill.
People that are visiting.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Yeah, it has nothing to do with.
You know, sometimes when you're on vacation, you see the little surcharge for like a resort fee, you know, the things are just included in, but.
So almost all these are all basically tourism taxes.
Yeah, yeah. And, you know, all of these properties, you know, we're having additional people coming into Del Monte, you know, there's.
Using our infrastructure.
Yeah, using our infrastructure, all of that. So I'm thinking we, I'd like to have the board direct Dorothy and Jeff to kind of come up with our next step and how we put this together.
Yeah, I mean, these numbers are totally grabbing from websites and everything we could grab, you know. It could be larger occupancy, it could, the rate could be more, but I tried to keep it in average and the best I could do.
Yeah, yeah, and thanks for that. You know, I mean, look at, even if the STRs aren't in there, you're right, it's not significant. I mean, I'm not going to kick, kick anything out of the bank account, as they say, but I think this is positive and it opens up another source of, of revenue stream.
Yep, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay, we, in agreement that we can direct them to take a look and move this, you know, bring it back to the board?
He's got a conflict to take.
Oh, yeah. Okay. The wall goes up. Yes. We're good?
Yeah.
Okay, great, okay. Wonderful.
And we have that motion in second.
Is there a motion?
I'd like to direct Dorothy and Jeff to move forward and developing or researching the process to bring back to the board as to how we go about moving forward on the hotel tax revenue stream.
Okay, we have a motion, is there a second?
I will second the motion.
Okay, roll call please.
Okay, trustee Lankin.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfield.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer?
Aye.
Motion passes.
Okay, cha-ching. Next up, sewer fund reserves. Yay.
And this hasn't changed from what the board saw at the initial time when we brought it to you.
Okay, so, yeah, I mean, we've, we've been down this path on these reserves. So really, I think what we're looking for at this point is for the board to direct you, Jeff, to create the resolutions to actually show how the money would be reallocated and to establish.
Allocated and reallocated.
You're right, both, both allocated and reallocated.
When somebody 30 years from now is looking and figuring out where these came from, they'll have resolutions that will tell them that and try to piece it together in the records.
Yeah, so we're creating the transparent record because that actually was one of the issues in the past of how the record was created, even setting up some of those old reserves. So I think it's a positive step forward really. Any other thoughts or a little motion there to direct our attorney? Any other thoughts, or a little motion there to direct our attorney?
Question, so could you just explain again how you determined where you wanted the new reserves to go? How much in each bucket? What was the general thought, and what led us down this path?
Well, many things brought us down this path, but I think the initial thoughts were looking at our multi-year plan and the allocation of upcoming expenses and needs. In addition, input from Zach, the mayor, yourself, who said they're gonna be kind of ironed all this out, and deciding this was a course of action establishing these funds as to where they needed to be. I mean...
And some of it seed money, kind of, and some of it is, you know, we're really just saying, some of it just has to be directly reallocated with new language, because...
Correct, but we're looking to reallocate is in the yellow in the existing. Repair reserve and the vehicle replacement reserve, because the language on those are problematic.
Yeah.
In addition, you know, we have a little bit of war because our fund balance in this account has been so high. It's a good way of moving it. But, you know, the board can start with funding a couple of these lines, or just moving the existing reserves to a proper location. But, you know, is there, I guess to the board, is there any concern with the funding of the lines that are being designated?
Yeah, and again, this is a combination of discussions, you know, ongoing with everybody, Willie. And it's also derivative of the capital plan, so...
Zach, could you help me out for a second? I'm looking at the capital plan right now. Vehicle equipment replacement, have we done the case loader?
Yes.
Have we done truck fourteen?
No.
Yeah.
No, so that's twenty-two grand. Have we done truck one?
No.
Okay, so sewer's gonna pitch up fifty-seven thousand on that. This takes us to next year. I know you already know the answer to this, but we've not done truck two, the Owens-Till, truck three, or the Kubota, right?
Correct.
So those three items are all vehicle equipment and replacement. And then the flush truck is also there where it's straight sewer. That's also a vehicle and equipment, that's two-hundred-and-fifty thousand. So if we take next year's amount, that sewer's gonna pay for in our capital plan and add it all up, we're looking at two-fifty plus sixty, seventy, eighty, plus this year another fifty-seven, that's gonna be three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. So just this year and next year of money not spent. Assuming this year it comes out of the budget and not the reserve, that's still three-hundred-and-thirty thousand. The equipment reserve only has got two-seventy. So one of the things that I was thinking is maybe we boost up that equipment vehicle reserve and come to that alteration fund, the alteration reserve fund, the two-seventy-five. I suspect the vast majority of that is for the toilet pond drainage facility, right? On the capital plan, that's a hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand. So let's say we are cautious there and put it at two-twenty-five. I think that still takes fifty grand from the alteration reserve and brings it over to the equipment reserve, where we've already had the long-term capital plan identify the needs. Seems like we're maybe off just a touch from where I would think we'd be. Is there, does anybody else have anything that in their mind they were allocating that excess to the alteration reserve for that wasn't in the capital plan that I'm not seeing?
Did you want to talk about the cost of the bathroom?
I think right now, this was a discussion that I had with Scott, the engineer, Brad O'Mar, who's the architect, on finding costs to build this bathroom, the capital plan that exists right now. And we're looking at about two-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. I think so.
Okay, that's okay.
A hundred dollars worth of...
That's okay, our business got fifty of it, funded from the budget, sixty-two thousand. We have cost estimates in the long-term capital plan of two-fifty, so we're still basically...
What was in...
We're spot on, okay, we're pretty darn close. The sewer was gonna pick up a hundred-and-eighty-seven, so we're allocating the vast majority of it to the sewer, not the twenty-two percent, so that's our new formula. So again, I think if we're taking the right amount out of the sewer reserves for this, that alteration fund is, again, let's say we round it up to two-hundred, two-ten, two-twenty-five, I think we're still probably fifty grand above where we need to be. And what we know is, we gotta buy a lot of stock, equipment, and the sewer fund is pitching up three-hundred-and-eighty-seven thousand from now until the end of two thousand twenty-six's budget. So I guess, put fifty, or even seventy-five. I guess, the way I see it right now, the capital plan says one-eighty-seven. If we put like, I don't know, two-hundred in the alteration reserve, and then put the rest in equipment, and then if we go over on alteration, we just pay it out of budget. Because we'd be paying the trucks and equipment out of budget anyway if we stick to the capital plan. So I think this is a little closer to what the capital plan is showing. The infrastructure repair, that's basically just... Give me that alone.
Pick a street.
Right, there's no problem putting anything there. Now, the building repair reserve fund, building replacement and improvement, hang on just a second. Oh, there we go, the building repair reserve fund, two-hundred thousand. Do we have anything in the capital plan specific to repair at this time? Or is this more of a preemptive deposit, how we're looking at this allocation?
In regard to the DPW or building repair?
I think it's anything, the sewer's portion, so any building it would be, so...
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything in the long-term capital plan that I would consider.
There's never a maintenance line though in the budget that is...
Right, I think this is more, you can't anticipate that.
Like a roof, maybe, not anything.
Right, if you were gonna take money away, I wouldn't take it from the alteration. I would, or reduce what you're taking, take a little more from the repair, if that...
Yeah.
I'm just, let me come back, we're gonna have a long-term capital plan discussion here pretty soon. And every single item in the sewer funds column, what it's paying for, our trucks, trucks, bathroom, I see the updated mapping, right, the mapping, that would be...
That's coming straight. That's coming out of budget.
It's just coming out of budget, okay, cool. I've got a tool cat, I've got mapping. I guess what I'm seeing here is until two thousand twenty-seven, twenty-eight, and it's still equipment and equipment replacement, and still that, geez. I'm gonna suggest we take probably a hundred out of building repair and fifty out of alteration, and put a hundred-and-fifty more in equipment. And then we basically paid for everything that's on the long-term capital plan, with inflation, if we're getting three or four percent out of the bank.
So we're left with a hundred, and, okay, I'm just...
Thanks, Dave. I like the way that you're thinking through this. It's tough for me to follow with all the numbers off here, but I think that overall, what you're doing is, it sounds like it's moving stuff in the retroaction. I really appreciate the fact that you've been looking at this and are doing this in the context of the capital plan.
But the other thing too, that I think it's addressing, is a whole bunch of really long-term deferred purchases of equipment. I mean, you know, we're really just saying, it gets, what it does frankly is it gets DPW back on the equipment schedule.
Remember everything you talked about, you don't wanna do a sales pitch when it comes budget time. And now we're gonna be sitting, after this is all done, if we put the extra one-fifty, fifty from alteration, a hundred from building repair, you're gonna have...
You have to suck it up, though.
You're gonna have four-hundred-and-twenty thousand dollars in the sewer's portion, okay, of all that stuff.
Right.
And then we'll stage it out, and then as we roll forward, we'll just keep looking at that capital plan and putting things out five years, six years. Now, if we're looking at money that's in the repair or the alteration fund, and we start to identify other opportunities, then we build on that. And then we allocate.
No, I mean, I agree, I mean, I'm right there with you. I think what's exciting to me is every budget cycle, the elephant in the room is the pile of old equipment. You know, I mean, it's massive, because the equipment schedule has just been derailed for so long, you know, in terms of replacement and, you know, all of that. I mean, you know, I wanna hear from the treasurer too, because, I mean, we are moving around, but we still are keeping stuff in the categories. But it definitely is sort of, to me, it's almost like the big correction, you know, for DPW. Because the big thing that you, you know, when you've been educating me by DPW, is really having that consistency of the equipment schedule, of the timing of replacement and auctions. And that's huge, because it's such a large expenditure for our village, and we need to get back on track for managing those assets properly.
I think that, I'm sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt.
No, that's okay.
I just wanna make sure, when you're running through the numbers, the, this is the sewer fund, right? So we can only allocate the percentage of the sewer used to the vehicle. We can't actually pay for like the entire tool cat, it's gotta be the sewer part of the tool cat.
It's the sewer's portion.
Yep, so what this will do, yeah, what it will do is essentially keep sewer rates confined, right, to where now we're funding six, seven years out, and we don't have to increase in the cover of their portion of rent cost. Maybe it still might apply. Like, for example, truck two would be two thousand twenty-five, twenty-six, it's two-hundred-and-sixty thousand. The sewer portion is fifty-seven of that. So that's all we're funding here.
But it's just getting us, it's going in the right direction.
Absolutely. The other question for you, Zach, regarding equipment vehicle repair, thirty-five grand. Do you have unexpected costs to our aging equipment until they're replaced that might suggest the costs are in excess of thirty-five thousand dollars? Or maybe instead of overfunding the new stuff, we actually fund a little bit more to the repair?
For example, we just set out with a truck that we're using for a week and a half, heavily hauling out debris from the shop. And it was parked all night, came in the next morning, and there was leaking oil from the engine and also hydraulic fluid from the hoist that was the box. And it was having mobility issues due to the clutch and the transmission. So we've got it in the shop, currently that building's looking at about seven thousand dollars. And this is about addressing the clutch and the transmission. So waiting on parts availability and prices on those parts to determine how much that truck's gonna cost, but it could be in the twenties.
Okay.
Yeah, this is where we are, though, see, and that's why, to just get us back on scheduling, because now our repair costs are down.
It's a consequence of the, why a consequence in the fiscal year.
If we, you guys are okay with this, I would say let's redirect. We've got two-hundred-and-seventy going into reserve, maybe we add another hundred of that, so it's three-seventy, but take fifty and add it to the thirty-five that's allocated to the equipment repair reserve. That's gonna put eighty-five grand there. So if we get into a bind or something like that happens that we didn't plan for, it's not regular routine, we know we can tap into it and grab it with approval from the board.
Let's think about that. So now that's tied, eighty-five thousand's tied up in a reserve for repairs. And as we start to really get back on track with new equipment, the needs for repairs go down.
Yep, which, this is the truck that's due for replacement.
Yes, so I'm not so sure.
It's a great question.
Now, there was, now we've tied up eighty-five, but we've got a brand-new truck.
Yep, and, I mean, we can make the decision...
Under warranty.
Yeah, okay.
So not much...
Let's take the risk, if we take a risk, it's just to the budget.
Yeah, we have a little hand up over here from the treasurer.
I have a question. We're looking to replace this truck.
That's what I was gonna get, so we can make the decision of whether we let that truck along. Right now it's only third and fifth year yet on work. So we have, we have six other years we can work with in the first three minutes.
How much is the replacement of the truck?
About two-fifty.
So that truck is...
That's truck one.
How long till we can replace the truck?
Yeah, lead time.
I'm hoping by the end of this fiscal year, we'll have a new truck. But I...
And this is where truck two can back up this truck?
Yes, and we, with the assistance of the town, we're able to use their dump trucks, because currently our truck two is fitted for leaf pickup, so we don't have an open dump truck. So it's, we can get by with only using one truck. We don't wanna dump all that money into the repair of truck one, because it's, the return value of the auction's gonna be not worth what the transmission's...
That was my next question.
So if we only do the bare minimum to give the thing back to the shop and use it when we need to, and not completely tap that repair budget.
Because you're wasting twenty thousand dollars that can go towards the purchase of the new truck, which is gonna be bonded, banned, yeah, actually a ban, which the board agreed to do for this fiscal year, I think, which just buys a new truck.
Let's just do it.
So the capital plan shows two-sixty for the truck, two-oh-two coming from the ban, and then sewer picking up fifty-seven of it.
Right, so I spend seven years instead.
It's already there.
And then the repair goes down.
Right?
Correct.
It's already there.
I, I just don't think it's fiscally responsible to repair something.
I agree. So then, so what do you need approvals from us to do?
I think you just need to issue, well, I need to contact the attorney to get the ban resolution done, and you need to get the quotes.
Yeah, get the quotes on the truck, right?
Except under a state bid, right?
Uh, yes, and we'll be offering state contracts.
Oh, well...
We'll be offering state contracts, so we're gonna put it out to that, you just need to get the ban and buy the truck.
Yeah, okay.
I'm all for that, I really am.
That's interesting. So we've got the fifty-seven, the sewer on the capital plan is picking up fifty-seven of that. Are we gonna use some of this money that we're redirecting to reserves?
If you put it into the equipment fund, the board can directly take money from the reserve to buy this truck, but I think it's within the budget already to, for, I'd have to look at the budget, but I'm pretty sure that money to purchase the truck is in the budget.
Okay, to the mayor's point, Jack's point, let's run the reserve at the thirty-five it's been allocated. Let's put the extra one-fifty instead into the equipment and vehicle reserve. Then building repair will go down to a hundred, and the alteration reserve will go down to two-twenty-five.
I'm good with that. I think that is far more practical.
Okay.
Because we know we're getting the truck and we're moving it all forward.
Thanks for that additional information.
Appreciate it.
You got, everybody had all the numbers, the bada-bing, bada-boom.
Bada-boom, bada-boom.
I make a motion to fund the reserves as discussed.
Nope, nope, resolution, he has to...
Okay, yeah, we gotta get, gotta get set up, right?
So we're gonna make a motion for...
Make a motion to direct Jack to set up a resolution to accomplish these results. Yes, exactly that.
What he said.
And I second that.
Okay, we have a second.
Okay, trustee Lanfier.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lankin.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Palmer.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Oh, okay. Okay, last item, last item here, this is great, though.
Before we move on, could I ask that when we have the resolution, could we also just put maybe a reference to the capital plan too, so people can see how this is in the agenda when we follow up? Because we made some changes in context.
They do what they say, yeah.
And he writes resolutions, I don't...
Yeah, you guys will sort it, you'll sort it.
So question to you, I don't necessarily think the resolution would contain the...
No, 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 it's not in the, I'm just in the packet.
Yeah.
You know, when we, when we...
It's like a new...
Yeah, if you wanted to, you could in that section, just take the capital plan and just have it be embedded.
It's a simple way.
Yeah, yeah, exactly.
Okay.
In the packet, that's all, not in the resolution.
Sounds like a plan, all right.
Okay, uh, yeah, sorry, just to go back to reserves. I know we were trying to take them month by month, December is what December is. Do we wanna take up the next general reserves in January and close this out next month? Or do you wanna see the general reserves next...
I'd like to keep going.
Yeah, why don't you put it in there, if you have a shot at it? And then, worst case, we're like, hey, let's just five minutes, ten minutes, and then bring it back in January, and then get to it in February, or maybe we get to it in January.
Okay.
So as we do that, let's also put the capital plan, if you could distribute the capital plan to the board.
Yep.
That's all I'm looking for, because I think with this conversation, it was good to just drop that in, but it would be good to have a...
Okay, I just wanna make sure that I'm, what I'm doing with the next...
Yes, the, so my interest in the capital plan right now is, it's only embedded in some minutes. When I go to reference it, I actually have a link that I've saved from the April thirtieth, two thousand twenty-four minutes. Am I wrong? Can I go somewhere online under applications and forms, budget and financials? And I don't see the capital plan there, so I was wondering, maybe you could drop it on that site?
Aye, I thought it was, I think it's on there, I'll double-check.
We can double-check, but also we're in the middle of redoing the website, and all of that's gonna be really consolidated in a much better way.
And I'm sorry, we had a couple questions.
Oh, okay, yeah, sure.
Take care of Eric's question, doesn't the board need to be precise as to where and why the reserves will be moved? Yes, that's the point of resolution, right?
Yeah, and the capital plan is...
Yeah.
Not why.
Yeah.
Why is already there.
Why is already there in the resolutions?
And the next question was, wasn't DPW bathroom part of the ARPA funds? Yes, it was.
Yes, so just clarifying on that, two hundred and fifty for the bathrooms, fifty is ARPA, sixty two thousand is general, and a hundred and eighty seven thousand is sewer.
Okay. That's it on the question, okay. Okay, great. Okay, so last item on the agenda is a resolution in support of continued and increased state aid for local governments. This was sent to us by NICOM as part of their advocacy for AIM funding. And I think it's a good thing to ask for a moment.
And actually, I apologize to the board, Jeff did send out a new resolution for this.
Oh, you did.
He sent it to the board, correct?
Yeah, you sent it directly.
So I didn't print it for the board. You didn't? Okay, the board can give me five minutes, I'll go get you there.
Yeah, thank you.
Motion.
But we know the general intent.
Right, exactly like that, except.
Yeah, I mean, essentially the sample.
Instead of being a sample.
Look like it.
Yeah. So, I don't know, do we want to talk about it?
This is pretty basic stuff. We always want to get, I mean, they, the NICOM argues for increased state aid for the AIM funds over and over again, and Dorothea certainly can speak to it, and Zach as well. It's a big deal, because they, it's been years since they've really significantly given any kind of increase to, to villages specifically. So it's a good point.
Anybody else have any comments before I chime?
Just, I, I think, have we, have we done this in prior years too? Because I feel like I've seen.
It's like every year, every year kind of. What happens is, you know, the, the legislative session for the state assemblies is in January, so they kind of tee things up, you know, towards the end of this fiscal year. And they put up, you know, they come up with legislative sort of priorities from NICOM, you know, representing what villages really want to see. You know, so we all kind of have our input. And so what you're seeing in front of you goes out to all the villages from NICOM. And you're right, it kind of comes back every year. It's become a tradition to always ask for more AIM funding, because they really have not significantly given increases. And I think the increase we got last year, I think, was sixteen hundred dollars. You know, that came down to our village. So we just keep asking and advocating, you know.
So I guess my only thing is, any time that essentially the state is collecting taxes, I said this last year too, it's why I remembered it. You know, the state collects taxes, and then they distribute some of it back down. And my understanding with AIM is they don't dictate what it gets used for, it's just a general fund, right? It's just, here's cash.
Yeah, what, I can't, Zach, what does AIM stand for again? The acronym AIM, you know, when we get our AIM funding, I can't even.
What's it stand for?
Aggregate.
Aid and incentives.
Aid or incentive, or aid and incentives, that's what it is, aid is incentive, yeah, I don't know.
Yeah.
Yeah, because it, every year we go through this.
I don't know, it's just another hack.
I know, it's one more hack.
Aid and incentives for municipalities.
Yes.
The, initially, I think the idea of this was to redistribute to towns and communities that might need it more than others. There was a time, I think it was nineteen, two thousand nineteen or so, that in two thousand nineteen, twenty, the inactive state budget eliminated aid for a hundred, or one thousand three hundred and twenty-five towns and villages determined to be less reliant on AIM. But then in two thousand one, two, I think they brought it back to all in two thousand two, twenty-three. So there's some year where the state brought it back. So I think the intent was a degree of distribution to the more needed villages and towns. As I said last year, I hate begging for money from the state. I'd rather have them just simply not tax people as much, and then let the local communities try to grab that money. And I also understand I'm not on the clock until Dorothea comes back. But here she is. So exactly like last year, I'm going to support it, but I'm sugar rant.
No, understood, but in my mind, it's money.
It's still money, yeah.
You know, I mean, really, I. Yeah, I mean, you know, that happened.
Yeah.
Okay, so essentially you have pretty much the same thing, but now you're seeing it, you know, in the village of.
Global suicide, if you say one of them.
No, really, no, neither.
Make a motion to approve the resolution in support of continued AIM funding.
I'll second, just ask what Jeff changed on the capital support process.
I'm going with white.
That was so well done, Jeff. Okay, we have a motion and a second by trustee Liket. Is there a roll call, please?
Sure, trustee Liket.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer. Motion passes.
Okay, great.
Do you want to do a train of crime? Building inspector's not here.
Yeah, and you have, you have Steve's write-up, so. I mean, if you have anything specific, you certainly can email him or just give him a quick phone call. Yeah, why don't we, yeah, then we can just come up.
So we fixed your primary concern, right? You talked about already, which is the truck.
Yeah.
Yeah. Is there anything else in here that you wanted to make sure we talked about?
No, not really. Again, I mean, we're just doing a ton of training, which.
Oh, we're doing your DPW report?
You want to get into this now, Dave?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Well, it's just that Jeff's, Jeff would like to have an attorney client, and after that. Well, why don't, let's just quick, let's just get through your report.
I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, it's just mostly training that we've been doing recently, so I'm trying to get a little bit of speed. Getting that equipment really going for the changing seasons, doing leaves now, picking up some leaves. A leaf machine was down last week for a little while, so we did what we could while that was down. This one, we borrowed the town's truck for our own leaves and brush. And yeah, just trying to, to work through all this stuff. Next week, we're getting into declarations, so we pulled off the leaves. And that'll probably take three, three or four days for us to sort out. We're planning on hanging on, it sounds like bridges Wednesday next week. And the weather is terrible, it's probably going to be Thursday. The tree for the feedings building is supposed to go up next week as well, so we'll decorate that. I'm hoping by the end of the week, have all the decorations sorted out. So the week of Thanksgiving, which is a short week, should be able to get some more leaf cleanup done. Just try to tidy up the village a little bit for the holiday. And then the week that after Thanksgiving is candlelight night. Monday, we're going to be spending all day bringing in light towers, you know, setting up message boards around the roads. We're leaving that. Tuesday, the day of the event, we'll be spending two and a half, clear up around the four corners. So that'll tidy and getting all the traffic stuff taken care of. And the road closure starts at four o'clock, and you know, hands on deck. Or we're going to start, we'll be doing some real things sometime after eight. But we, by nine, we'll be gone. And then Monday is going to be bringing everything back to, to add more that we were putting. The light towers and the message boards, so we won't be back on leaves until after that Wednesday after candlelight.
It's part of the candlelight tradition.
Yeah, we're going to have a solid two weeks without picking up leaves, so just be patient. You know, please tell anybody who is asking about this that you may have.
Most residents are pretty familiar, because everybody anticipates candlelight night, and they know what it takes to put it on. So I feel like, I mean, we just had Halloween, I don't know.
I know, it's just going by itself.
Not quite there.
And the way that Thanksgiving falls this year, usually there's a week, it's like Thanksgiving and candlelight night, so basically we don't have one this year. And yeah, that's, that's really about it. We're going to be shutting down the drinking fountains next week as well. And I'm bringing in flower pots and orange and beet mumps, the more envellers, preparation for snow.
Okay. Any other questions for Zach? All right. We're going to go into an attorney client, thanks for. And I make a motion that we go into an attorney. Yes, we do for this.
Oh, okay.
Attorney client session, session to discuss some real estate.
A second.
Oh, I'm thinking of executives. Well, we could discuss anything then. There was a motion, is there a second?
I second.
Who made this?
Lisa did, yeah.
Okay. Trustee Liket.
Aye.
Trustee Marshall.
Aye.
Trustee Coe.
Aye.
Trustee Lanfeer.
Aye.
Mayor Plummer. Motion passes. Right, give me a minute, please.